Okay.
If you want to vote in the June twenty-third town election but don't feel comfortable going to a polling place due to COVID-19, voting via absentee ballot is an option to all voters. Request your absentee ballot. Visit the town's website, marimacknh.gov, and you'll see a direct link to the request form. Print and fill out your request form and mail it to the Town Clerk's Office at 6 Babusick Lake Road. Email your request to townclerk@marimacknh.gov. Fax it to 603-423-8539, or leave your request form in the drop box, also located at 6 Babusick Lake Road, and the ballot will be mailed to your address. Due to Town Hall being closed to the public until further notice, there is no ability to request an absentee ballot in person. Once you receive your absentee ballot, the Town Clerk's Office strongly recommends returning your ballot through the mail as soon as possible. When returning a ballot by mail, it must be received by 5:00 PM on Voting Day, June twenty-third, 2020. Mail your absentee ballot in a timely manner to ensure they're received by 5:00 PM on June twenty-third, 2020. Please note ballots cannot be left in the drop box at Town Hall. This election may be different from what you're used to, but you can be confident that Merrimack wants to keep voting as accessible as possible so that everyone can continue to participate in the democratic process. For the most up-to-date information on absentee ballots, the town election, or for further clarification, please visit marimacknh.gov. Click on Town Clerk under the Departments tab, and then Elections and Voting. Thank you for watching.
Good evening, folks, and thank you for joining us. This is the Thursday, May twenty-eighth, Town Council meeting. We're obviously virtual again. Town Hall is still closed. I invite you to join us through the Merrimack TV Channel 20, or on the Merrimack TV Facebook Live page, which is facebook.com/merrimacktv. If you wish to speak during the public hearing or public comments, please dial into the phone numbers that'll be showing on the screen, and use the meeting ID, again listed on the screen at the bottom. And with that, we will proceed with some of the technical procedures. Because this is a virtual meeting, I have to do a roll call vote and get each of the councilors to tell me who they are, that they can hear me, where they are, and why they are not in the council meeting. So I'll start. My name is Tom Koenig. I'm Councilor Tom Koenig. I'm participating electronically from my home in Merrimack at 1 Danforth Road due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am alone in my room at the moment, but my wife and family are here in the house, and my cat is around here somewhere as well. I can hear the folks in this group. Lon, can we go to you next?
This is Councilor Lon Woods. I'm participating electronically from 2 Harbor Street in Merrimack, New Hampshire. I am alone. I'm participating electronically due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
And you can hear us? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Nancy? I can't hear you, Nancy.
Well, now you can.
Now I can.
Hi, I am Councilor Nancy Harrington. I am participating electronically from home on 11 Spruce Street. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, I am alone in this room. My husband is in the other room, and hopefully my cat does not show up either, and I can hear you as well.
Thank you. Barbara?
Hi, this is Councilor Barbara Healy. I am participating electronically from 68 Back River Road here in Merrimack due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am here alone, except for my two dogs, that you can hear barking in the background, and I can hear all of you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Councilor Peter Albert. I'm participating in this meeting electronically from my home at 12 Roberta Drive in Merrimack, New Hampshire due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am in my home with the family members and my three dogs.
And you can hear us?
And I can hear you.
Thank you. And Bill Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Councilor Bill Boyd. I am participating electronically from the dining room at 139 Jopper Road here in Merrimack due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm here with my wife is in the other room, and my daughter's upstairs. Periodically, they may be coming into the kitchen to get something to drink or to eat, and I too also have three dogs that may be joining as well. And like everyone else, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I spoke with Finley about a half an hour ago. Finley Rothaus is not going to be able to join us. He's in a car heading towards New York State. A family situation. So if something urgent were to come up, you said give him a call, but I'm not expecting that to happen tonight, so we're going to excuse him from this meeting. Paul and Eileen, I presume you can hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. So that gets us through that then to Cali. So with that, I'd like to get started with our meeting. We called the order. The next thing for us to do is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to mute all, and we'll do a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible. But I lose that one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Somebody help me out here.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
And justice for all. Thank you very much. That was pretty bizarre, and I apologize for that. Call it nerves. By way of announcements, I have a few that I've created. Voting Day, the official voting ballot vote will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-third, 2020. As you probably got from the opening video, absentee ballots are available for this election. You can contact the Town Clerk's Office through the town website, www.merrimacknh.gov/elections-voting, or go to the website, click on the Department, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, and on the left side is a link for elections-voting. And then when you click that link, it will bring you to a page with a link for requesting an absentee ballot. The governor has declared, because of the emergency with the COVID-19, that anybody who would like is welcome to absentee ballot, and the excuse is for disability due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There is also a mailing going out to all registered voters. They have information on requesting an absentee ballot. Look in your mailbox in the next few days. Upcoming Town Council meetings, we expect to meet on June eleventh at 7:00 PM. And at this point, I would expect that to be another virtual meeting. Thursday, June twenty-fifth at 7:00 PM. We'll assume it's a virtual meeting unless something changes between then, which could be later on in this meeting, who knows? Eileen, did you have any other announcements?
I do.
That I didn't step on?
I kind of have the same ones, but I'm going to try and give a little bit more information, or in different words or something. So all voters are advised that in light of the current public health state of an emergency and current public health guidance on social distancing and avoiding being in public groups of ten or more, all voters have a reasonable ground to conclude that a physical disability exists within the meaning of RSA 657:1. Therefore, all voters may request an absentee ballot on that basis. We are sending out, they sent out today?
Today.
Today, all registered voters, we sent out we sent out requests for absentee ballots to all registered voters. So any voters that would like to register, vote absentee, fill that out. Make sure that if you're doing it because you're concerned about COVID-19, that you check the section that says "physical disability," because that's what the guidance is. So you send that back to us, you fill it out, you send it back to us, then we will mail you the absentee ballot itself, and then you can mail that back, and that's what the process is. Okay? So, voter registration. Due to the COVID-19, all persons not registered to vote are eligible to eligible for absentee voter registration. Persons needing to register to vote should contact the Town Clerk's Office for an absentee voter registration package, and their phone number is 424-3651. This concerns voter-party affiliation change deadline. The deadline for voters to change party affiliation prior to the September eighth state primary election is Tuesday, June second, 2020. Voters who are registered for a political party may only vote on that party's ballot at the primary election. Voters wishing to change their party affiliation prior to the primary are urged to download a change form found on the town website. Voters without internet access should contact the Town Clerk's Office at 424-3651 for a form. In addition to, in addition, supervisors of the checklist will be set up outside the Town Hall complex from 7:00 to 7:30 PM on Tuesday, June second. This deadline is for voters who are registered as Republican or Democrat who wish to change to a different party or as undeclared. Voters registered as undeclared do not need to change party affiliation as they may choose to join either party at the election. There is a party. Filing for state offices. The filing period for state representatives will be held from Wednesday, June third to Friday, June 12th. Due to COVID-19, filing forms have been placed on the New Hampshire Secretary of State website. Filing forms can be completed and mailed or left in the drop box at Town Hall. In-person filing will only occur on Friday, June 12th, outside Town Hall complex from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Tax bills will be mailed June 5th with a due date of July 6th. That's all I have.
That's a lot. Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any questions about the announcements from the councilors? And we'll move on to comments from the press and public. At this point, there are a couple of people that have dialed in whom I don't know. If you are interested in addressing the council at this point, hit *9 on your phone to raise your hand, and we'll acknowledge you. So I have an individual with the number of 717, the last three digits. I'm going to unmute you so you can go ahead and speak. Please state your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hey, thank you. This is Jeffrey Lacore from 42 Marty Drive. I tried writing in earlier using the contact page on merimacknh.gov. Two weeks ago, there was a discussion about opening up some of the local park areas for stuff like beach volleyball and whatnot, and I was concerned with opening up the skate park. It was kind of lumped in the same category as beach volleyball and basketball, and I didn't think that was really fair. It's kind of, I didn't see it as comparable. There's, you're not as close quarters. You know, I just thought it was different and should be otherwise considered. So I just wanted to write in, encourage you guys to take, maybe have a second discussion talking about opening up the local skate park, possibly putting up, you know, signs similar to what is at the Merrimack Dog Park saying, you know, please follow the current COVID recommendations and, you know, use personal responsibility. And it just seemed like a place where, you know, people are practicing individual activities and seemed a little different. So that's all.
Jeff, I appreciate it. We did get your email. It was forwarded to us by Becky, so everybody's had a chance to see it. You made some really good points, I guess, and we'll get into the discussion a little bit later. I don't want to get into it during public comments, but there certainly are still concerns of body fluid, sweat, and things like that, that get on a skateboard ramp if somebody were to slip and fall, and I'm sure you don't do that because you're better talented than I am. But we'll get into that discussion and see where the council wants to go with that. Okay?
All right. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council during the public comment period? *9 on your phone? I'm not seeing any, and I didn't see any emails prior to the meeting, per the information that we send out. So there are a couple of numbers here, but I'm not seeing a *9, so I'm assuming you're not interested in talking to the council at this point. So I'm going to close the public participation at this point and move to recognitions, resignations, and retirements, of which we have none, or appointments, we have none, which brings us to the public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing on the acceptance of the New Hampshire Governor's Office of Emergency Relief and Economic Recovery for Coronavirus Relief Fund. We spoke about this last time at our meeting. Authorized Eileen to be able to sign for it, and what we need to do is have a public hearing to be able to accept and expend the funds. And so I'm going to ask Eileen to introduce this, if you will, or Paul. You're muted at this point, Paul. Thanks.
So we are, it's exactly what you said. It's the, the town is eligible to apply for up to $607,000 for COVID-related expenses that are within a very, a very specific category. So for instance, it doesn't, it's not for firefighters and and police, public safety personnel, because that's covered under FEMA. But it includes things like making making alterations to Town Hall at the Town Clerk's Office to make sure that everyone is safely socially distanced. Things that we might need. We need a lot of legal advice lately because, you know, there's so many variations on the theme of everything that we do. We, so we can spend that with that. We're buying hand sanitizer and and also making various modifications to the polling places, again, for the safety of the workers, the election workers, as well as for the public. So those are some of the kinds of expenses that it can be used for. So we, in the, somewhere in the middle of all the paperwork, there was a requirement for a public hearing, and we didn't do it last week, so we need to do it, two weeks ago, so we need to do it this week. Does anybody have any questions?
Peter?
Yes, Eileen, thank you. Under the Examples of Allowable, I saw wages and benefits required by the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for non-first responders. Can you guys give me an explanation of what that means?
I'll let Paul do it.
That is for, because the Families First Act provided eighty hours of emergency sick leave to all people. So it would be those kind of wages. Also provided two-thirds wages for anybody for ten weeks for daycare. So if that's what those additional costs would be that we could use that money for.
Could I just clarify? So very well said, but we're not paying for people's daycare. What it is, is so people are allowed eighty hours of basically additional sick time, COVID-19 related, as well as another ten weeks of, for circumstances such as you're unable to get childcare. So a person is able to get two-thirds of their wages, and that's what that is. Is that clear, Er?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Why don't we throw it open to the public hearing at this point? If there's anybody in the public who has questions or comments on the Governor's Gopher Office of whatever with respect to it. I have several callers. If either any of you are wanting to talk to this subject from the perspective, please dial *9 on your phone. If you want to call in, you need to call in the numbers that are on the screen and include the meeting code number. So again, I don't see anybody's hand raised, so nobody's hitting a *9. I'll give you just another few seconds to raise your hand if you're interested in it, or for somebody else to call in quickly. We opened the meeting, we opened the public hearing at some time that I can't even find my clock, so I don't even know when it was.
Nine twenty, 7:24.
Okay, thanks. I'm still not seeing anybody from the public calling in, so I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:25. Peter?
Yeah, Eileen and Paul, just one other question. Do you know how much money we'd have totaled spent already that falls under the category for allowable?
Probably around $150,000 so far, because it's, a lot of it has to do with the elections, and we, there hasn't been a lot for the, you know, for the provision that you were talking about, Peter, the one for people taking time off. There hasn't been a lot of that. So I would, I would guess, what would you say, Paul?
Between 100 and 150 right now.
Yeah. We haven't spent it all yet, but that's kind of what our tally is on the things that we've ordered. We've ordered masks, we've ordered, we've ordered digital, not digital. Are they called digital?
Infrared.
Infrared thermometers, believe it or not, we received them today, seven of them, like gold. And hand sanitizer, masks, and all those kinds of things. So we, we have a pretty good supply, as do does the police and fire departments.
Now, do you see any infrastructure improvements as far as, or air filtering systems or anything for anywhere where the public and our employees and everybody interacts?
Not, that's, that's an interesting thought. We did just put a HVAC, whole HVAC system in a couple
Last winter.
Last winter. One of the things that we were thinking about was, which we, I have not received advice on, but is putting in toilets that are touchless, flushing, and sinks with the same. And at the same time, we could use our own money to spruce up the bathrooms and the, you know, public bathrooms. So that's one of the things that we're thinking about, and if anybody has any ideas or suggestions, love to hear them. We're on a manager's listserv, so we're hearing all of the things and the ideas. Also, New Hampshire Municipal Association has been very helpful in getting answers for us on various questions that we've had. They've been really advocating for municipalities.
Thank you.
Along those lines, Peter, maybe they could change the filters more frequently if you're concerned that the air circulation in the building would be a problem, and that might be considered part of a COVID expense.
It would, I'm sure.
Weekly or something instead of monthly.
So, so for instance,
Go ahead.
Okay. So one of the other things that's important to note, it's, it's pretty costly for sending out all the requests for absentee ballots to all 20,000 registered voters in town. So that, the postage and the, all that kind of thing will, I want to say that's around $10,000.
Actually sixteen.
Sixteen thousand, including postage. But then they'll be mailing absentee ballots back if people, you know, apply by mail. Also, we've been, it sounds like small amounts, but it adds up. Seems like everybody's buying a new car these days. I said that the last time. But the cost of mailing plates to people is pretty expensive. So all those kinds of things that we're doing that we, we've asked the department and various, they have spoken to their employees about keeping track of those things that you're doing differently now because of COVID-19 and keeping track of them separately.
Okay, thanks. Barbara?
I was just going to say regarding the filtration that you put in last year, there are filters that you can buy that are not quite HEPA, but almost. It might be something to look into as well.
Happy to.
Okay. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Either to Eileen or to Paul, I know some of the allowable expenses include welfare costs regarding food, shelter, and utilities since, since we've started with this pandemic. Have, has our welfare department seen any kind of an uptick where we've been reviewing expenses and paying up, paying up money to people looking for assistance?
So far, a total of $500.
That's not bad. All things considered, that's pretty good. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on this topic before we move to close? Saying none. Paul, Eileen, do we need to take any kind of vote, or just hold this public hearing?
We need a motion to accept and expend the $607,408 pursuant to RSA 3195B in Charter Article 8-15. So moved, so moved, and furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign the necessary paperwork required to accept and expend.
Second.
A move by Bill and seconded by Peter. Anybody have any comments before we go to a vote? Saying none. This will be a roll call vote. Again, if you recall, Finley is excused. Lon Woods?
Woods, Jay.
Myself, yes. Nancy Harrington? You're muted, Nancy. We need to hear you.
I'm just going to have to keep it unmuted. Yes.
Thank you. Peter, Albert?
Yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd, I
And Barbara Healy.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, so that passes 600 by roll call. Are we good there, Paul?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
Okay. That brings us to legislative updates from state reps. Again, I have several people on the phone presumably waiting to be able to talk. If you are wanting to talk at this point, please hit *9 on your phone to raise your hand so that we can acknowledge you. And I have not seen anybody responding in that regard, so we'll move along. Next on our agenda is the town manager's report.
Sorry. I don't have a report per se, because what we're going to be doing, we're going to be talking about a lot of what we've been working on here Sorry, sorry. I don't have a report, um, per se, because what we're going to be doing, we're going to be talking about a lot of what we've been working on here uh, regarding, uh, opening various things, opening town hall and that kind of thing. And when we get to that on the agenda, that's when the, the basis, the lion's share of my report would be.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager on her report? Seeing none. We'll move on in the agenda. That brings us, uh, to the first item, well, there's no consent agenda. This is the first item under old business, which is an M Y A follow-up discussion submitted by M Y A President Brian Harris. And I know that Brian and, and Holly Golden are both on the, on the phone. We're going to unmute you if you'd like to, uh, turn on your camera. There you are. There's Brian. Um, we'll, we'll take you into the discussion at this time. Um, the town council will be presented with an update from the Merrimack Youth Association. Brian?
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Uh, we need a little more volume from you.
Okay. I'll, uh, just try speaking up, I guess.
Thank you.
We can't hear you, Brian. Sorry. We're all learning.
Hear me now?
Not really.
Softly?
Just barely.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll make it work.
Okay, um, I'll talk as loud as I can.
Thank you.
Or makes it worse.
No, it's good.
Hopefully all of you have received, um, the letter and the financial statement from the audit firm this past week. Um, so M Y A, as you know, has been working very hard diligently, uh, for the past, uh, ten months trying to get their books and, uh, accounts in, in line to check and, um, pleased to tell you that, uh, we have, uh, we've done, uh, everything that you have asked and more. Um, for example, it's like we reached out to, I believe it was Councilman Boyd's suggestion that we reached out to SCORE, the nonprofit organization. Uh, we have a gentleman, uh, Roman that works with us. Uh, we hired Merrimack Tax um, to do our, our QuickBooks, our bookkeeping, our, um, um, our entries into our QuickBooks to make sure we're doing it right, putting the right, uh, the right accounts. Um, internally, we, we, um, established a, what we call a, uh, financial committee inside the M Y A. And we did our own internal audit before we sent paperwork and all our books and informations over to the, uh, Plowski, uh, and Sanders, the audit firm. Um, our programs are when we, when they're looking for a new treasurer to, because of turnover, they're, they're trying to find not just a body, but someone with a little bit of background at least for, um, possibly a bookkeeper or a C P A. And I believe, uh, like six out of the seven now have, have people in place that have a little bit of back, uh, backgrounds, um, for the treasurer position because we believe that is probably the most important at this time is the treasurer's position. Um, I'm pleased to, uh, tell you guys that we had our, our audit come back, um, and I think Paul could probably maybe turn on the wording on it. It says, um, uh, what did he just do? Oh, it's right here. Sorry. There's an opinion. Uh, and this is directly from, uh, Plowski. I'm probably not saying that right, but it's, uh, Plowski and Sanders. Uh, and it states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above presented fairly and in all materials respects the assets, liabilities and net of Merrimack Youth Association of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen." So that's basically our audit for the last year's books. Apologize, shut my phone off. Um, and so now we're here tonight, um, asking all of you, uh, town council to, um, release, uh, the, the, um, M Y A allotment of, to, to run our program, um, in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, like I said, we've done everything that you've had to do. Um, we've put good controls in place. Uh, we have a good, um, handle on things now, um, and we're, we're still working to improve them. So we still have the financial committee and we're still going forward with that and and working on, um, things to basically make it easier for a high turnover rate. So the next person comes in, there'll be some sort of book or manual stating, all right, this is what you do if you receive money from concessions. So, um, I believe we've come a, a long way. And I, I really hope you guys could consider releasing the allotment of the seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Brian. Um, Paul, do you want to, uh, throw any words in there to confirm his assessment of the audit report? You know, you're muted, Paul.
The audit report was what we would call it as a, a clean audit, um, by, uh, Plausik and Sanders. Uh, however, there, there were some things that Plausik and Sanders did point out in their management letter, uh, that I believe due to the timing of hiring the, uh, bookkeeper and, uh, actually bringing on Roman. I think that even next year's audit, it would be done, you know, be even cleaner um, and quicker to be able to be put out because the bookkeeper now has, is starting at the beginning of the year and not during the middle of the year like she did last year to try to get two thousand and nineteen in shape. Um, but there are some concerns, but like, like Brian said, the M Y A has made leaps and bounds. They are moving forward. Uh, the financial committee was, was, uh, a great success. They wrote a lot of policies that, uh, for the programs to follow, um, as well as, uh, to look at. And actually, they did kind of an audit on their own before they sent the stuff off to the auditors to make sure the information that they were sending was accurate and, uh, and, and moving forward. Um, so the M Y A definitely has, uh, done, got the audit completed, uh, which was one of the prerequisites of the council. Another prerequisite was to hire the bookkeeper. They have done that and they have put financial controls in place. And, and like with any organization, your internal controls are always ever changing. Um, so with this financial committee in place, I, I believe that they will be able to adapt to, uh, the changing internal control environments with the changeover of, of their treasures that they do have.
Okay. Uh, Brian, I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into it and I thank you for coming back to talk to us about this. Um, we'll open it up to the council at this point. Nancy, I saw your hand.
Thank you very much. Did you notice I've just kept it not muted? Just so I don't have to worry about it.
Probably a good idea.
As you know, I've been somewhat involved with the M Y A, even though our meetings have been, uh, in conflict on occasion. And it's been pretty evident that they've done a really good job of responding to what our complaints were. Uh, obviously the auditors, they pay for the auditors. They also pay for the bookkeeping uh, and responded, as I mentioned, to get a mentor from SCORE. So I think personally, I think they've really done really well. I'm going to be making a motion asking for the release of the money that is due to them. But I also want to be able to have a discussion about the contract for next year. Cause I believe, and Paul, you can, uh, validate or not, this contract is up June thirtieth?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think the contract has to be able to reflect, one, uh, an encouragement to continue with what they're doing, but also an expectation that they need to continue what they're doing. So I'd like to be able to, pro- it's probably going to be a two-part motion. One is going to be about the release, but the second is going to be about establishing a contract with perhaps some parameters. For example, and this was suggested, I talked to Paul and Eileen. Um, if they are able to get the audit complete by December thirty-first, they'll get the entire amount. But in future dates, if they don't get it done, then they have a decreasing amount that they would receive. So I'm not sure how you want to handle this, Tom. Do you want me to talk about two different motions?
Yeah, I'd rather take it up as two different discussions. Yes, Eileen?
Um, I think that, uh, I agree with Tom. You should do it as two different motions. The second one, so the first one has to do with, um, the contract they were already in. It hasn't expired yet. So that would be a separate one and that's the reason for that. The second one should be, um, we should be able to take your, what you collectively advise, put that together, um, appropriately into, uh, the, uh, modifying the new, new contract, which would be a continuation of the old one with, with, with this, um, is this modification. So, um, what I would like is, as I said, one, the motion for the seventy-two thousand and also, um, if you would give us the time to draft the language that we would like to, um, that you would like to collectively have us put in, into the, um, into the contract based on your, um, you know, on your, what you're trying to achieve.
Right. And we plan to have two meetings in June, so we shouldn't have any problem being able to bring that contract forward for, uh, ratification before the end of this current contract. Is that all right with you, Nancy?
Yes, it is. So just to clarify, first motion, I have no question. The second is really, do you need a motion for that, Eileen, or just-
No, we just have a discussion.
Okay. Okay, that's fine with me.
To give the, the staff guidance.
Yep.
Okay. Well, you had a question or a comment?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a question to, well, let me make a comment first. Um, I have not had a chance to read the financial statement. I have looked through the communication regarding governance and the communication regarding significant different deficiencies. Regarding the communication on governance, um, Plausik and Sanderson reported that the M Y A was very favorable as it relates to no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, which means they cooperated them. If there were any uncorrected or corrected statements, um, they weren't, they weren't material to the audit. What, and in the aggregate, that benefits the bottom line, which, which is a really good thing. Um, they had no disagreements. They didn't seek a second opinion. So I, I, I concur with Council Harrington for the most part that they, the M Y A has definitely listened to what the council has had to say about their practices and based on Plausik and Sanderson's letter, I think that they're to be commended for, for, for following, um, the lead on their auditors and and working to get to this particular point. The question I have for either Eileen or Paul and it, and for my council, this is on the document. It says, "Communication with those charged with governance at the conclusion of the audit." It is the first paragraph under significant audit matters as it relates to qualitative aspects of accounting practices. The second sent it, sentence down, it reads, "No new accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies was not changed during two thousand and nineteen." We noted no transactions entered into by the association during the year for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. So my question to either Eileen or Paul is how does that statement material impact the letter? Cause to me, the way that I read it, the rest of the le- the, of the letter is very positive. I have a different look on that particular language there. And I was wondering if, if you could shed some light on what the accountants were writing in that particular sentence? In layman's terms, please.
Uh, can I, can I give it a whirl? I used to work for Plausik and Sanderson, in case you didn't know.
I didn't know that.
But anyway, um, so, um, what we're talking about are account, are, as you say, accounting terms. One, um, one, the most severe is a material weakness, which means that there's no, um, credibility. There's, there's, uh, I don't say no credibility, but there's a material weakness to the, to the point where, um, you really can't qua- you really can't give them a clean opinion. Then there's another term that is called significant deficiencies, which mostly, um, deal with internal controls. Um, and they list them here. Did you, did you see them? So, um, again, a lot of these things, as we were discussing this, we knew that there would be issues, um, because we, while we were discussing this, we were in the middle of that fiscal year. So we knew, um, going into this, that there would be some, you know, some issues uh, as they were trying to put, you know, put things together. Uh, so a good part of the year had, um, a certain part of the year, I should say, had, had transpired before, um, they were even told what the weaknesses were. So, um, one of the things they, they say, just to give you, just to put it in perspective, um, you know, these are, as you say, accounting terms. So they sound really strong. A material weakness is a death knell. Um, significant deficiencies, less so. Um, so checks, it says here, checks, some checks were unaccounted for. Um, it was noted that the checks, uh, were mostly, uh, most likely voided or unused. So they said, you know, keep, keep better track of, of the actual physical checks that we have. Um, cash reconciliation, it said, uh, the cash accounts did not reconcile to the general ledger and there was a significant amount of old outstanding checks. Um, this shows that the records were not provided for an opportunity for someone to write, um, or and cash a check without recording it in the records. So, um, so, but basically, um, the, the, the M Y A had not reconciled their accounts, their cash accounts to the, to the, um, extent that the auditors wanted them to. But what it was able to be reconciled. So they're, you know, they're saying, you, you should have audited. You're supposed to reconcile your accounts, give us the financial statements and we're supposed to give you an opinion on them and test it. But, uh, it basically says that the, the books weren't completely closed.
Okay.
And the cutoff, it, again, um, this stems back to, uh, early on, I believe in that, um, on occasion, it said that, um, the checks were being recorded when they were cashed and not when they were written. So, um, I'm sure that that has been corrected again with the expense revenue backup. That just means when you have an expenditure, you need to have the bill behind it and, you know, easily, easy to find. And I believe, um, that most of those things through the internal control practices will be, um, taken care of if they have not been already. And I, I'll let, um, Polly or, um, or Brian, sorry, I was going to call you Dave for some reason, I don't know why. But, um, let either one of you maybe talk about, um, what you've done in rela- uh, relation to, uh, your, um, handling of your blank checks, your cash reconciliations and your, um, uh, recording checks when they were shown in the bank statement, um, as being cashed. as being cashed rather than when you wrote them. So. Do you have something to say, Holly?
Holly, if you want to talk, can you do it?
Yeah, sorry, my video wasn't working either, so I wasn't sure if Brian wanted to talk or not. But so as of, after we came in and straightened some stuff out, I think it was July 1st, I took over all of the check writing for the MIA. So that's one of the things that won't, you won't see missing checks unless they're voided because only one person is handling that, so I know that that was one of the audit items. So everything goes through the executive board for check writing.
That's awesome. That's really awesome.
And since we started the COVID-19 stuff, we've decided that the treasurer, the finance committee created another policy, so, cause everyone's working from home, it's really hard for us to get to the MIA building. So the treasurer and the director of every program will email me saying, "This bill is approved for payment," and then I just process it through online bill pay. So I think that's one thing that was huge, is having everything done, you know, by one person. We had heard that a lot, that we have too many, too many signers, too many people cutting checks and all of that stuff. So we brought it in and have been doing it centrally.
Excellent. Yep, I agree with Counselor Woods, that's amazing. I guess the follow-up, and thank you, Holly, for the explanation, I appreciate it, I really do. I guess the, I guess the question I'd asked for Paul a couple of years ago, when we asked the MIA to do an audit, and they couldn't complete the audit, did, the letter that we, and correct me if I'm wrong, the letter said that there were material weaknesses. So there is, as what Eileen has alluded to, there is a distinction between material weakness and a significant deficiency, and that, and that they've actually moved up the ladder from where they were several years ago. Is that a fair underst, am I understanding that correctly, Paul?
Do you mind if I just answer? I know you don't want to hear.
Go right ahead, Eileen, sorry, go right ahead.
No, that's okay, but so what they had before was a material weakness to the point where no one could be sure of the numbers. So where they are now, as you have expressed, all of you, is worlds, light years ahead of where they were. They didn't even get, it wasn't even material weaknesses, the auditors simply walked away. They said, "We will not participate." So, so that's another whole level of, so big, huge congratulations and thanks for the great work that you guys have done. It really shows.
And Brian, I'm personally happy that Roman has worked out for you. I think that's, it had to have been hopefully refreshing to get a new set of eyes on certain things going on in the MIA and bringing some positive energy to fixing, to creating new processes and fixing old ones. So thank you so much for doing that, and I'm happy the relationship is working out.
Thank you, and it was, it was a great suggestion, and I would have never known about it until you did say something. He's a great guy, and he has done a lot of work for us. He's, you know, he's been through this and the audits and for a high level. I think it was Velcro of USA. But he's still continuing with us, he's gonna move on, and we're gonna keep going and striving forward, trying to, the first thing we want to address is any of the deficiencies that came up in the audit. We're gonna make sure that we correct those first for next year's audit and keep going forward. Thank you for the recommendation.
You're welcome, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Lon, you had something you wanted to add?
No, I think things are right on the right track. Good job, Lon.
Okay, anybody else in the council? Eileen?
Would you like Paul, cause he's a CPA. I don't, I don't mind, he is a CPA, so what would you like to say, Paul?
I was just gonna say, the, on that communication with those charged with governance at the conclusion of the audit, a lot of that is boilerplate language that the AICPA makes the auditors write up. And the big thing is, is when they do the indent and the italic saying Disclosure of Modified Cash Basis Note 2, that's really the input from the auditors. All the other stuff that's written in these documents is boilerplate. It's when they give their opinions and saying, "We encountered no difficulties with this stuff," and things of that sort. And as Eileen said, yeah, they have some deficiencies they gotta work on, but compared to last year at this time, this is, this is night and day. This isn't even close. Last year, the auditors didn't want anything to do with it. This year, they're happy to put their name on an audit opinion, which is huge.
And it's the same auditors.
And it's the same firm, so that speaks volumes to the MIA and where they've come in the last 11 months.
Okay, Nancy, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just waiting to see when I can make the motion.
No.
I got the order from Ron. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to release the 72,096 dollars from the budget to the MIA. Is that a correct motion, Paul?
For the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019.
There you go.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, that's the budget. I should have let you stuck with Paul. For the, for the.
For the 1920 budget.
Fiscal year 2000.
1920.
1920 budget.
Correct. So that would be added on to the end of the motion. For the fiscal 2019, 2020 budget.
Whatever the budget number was, was that budget number correct, Paul?
Yes, it was.
Checked it with him today.
Oh, okay, thank you. Do we have a second motion?
Second.
Seconded by Lon Woods, motion by Nancy. Bill, did you want to speak to that?
I just, I have a, I have a question. Should the council approve the appropriation of 72,000 to the MIA? What is going to be the immediate need that the MIA will be using with the funds? I'm just curious to know.
Well, part of the thing is they've lost money with this COVID thing, haven't you guys?
Yeah.
And which you didn't address in the letter, you talked about requesting $13,000 from the previously withheld money. But as you might already know, that money's gone. It's not a matter of, that was from the previous year's budget. So the money that we withheld is gone, so we can't give you 13,000 of it. But we can release this money, so you can be using this money partly for that or whatever.
Right, yeah, we, it's definitely gonna be used for the COVID stuff. We, I think lacrosse, baseball, I think even softball, they've canceled their seasons. They weren't able to do any fundraising, and, you know, we have uniform costs that we've already dished out, that we're not gonna get back, and find, you know, fees for crediting everyone or cutting checks, whatever the process is for refunding people. There's paying fees and charges associated with that as well, so. That'll be the first.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the counselors on the motion that's on the table? Release the full amount, remaining amount of the money available for MIA in this year's budget? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correctly, for the fiscal year 2019, 20.
All right, fine. Any other, no other comments? We'll move vote, again, a roll call vote, Lon Woods?
Woods, yes.
Tom Koenig, yes. Nancy Harrington?
Yes.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
Barbara Healy?
Yes.
And Bill Boyd?
Bill Boyd, aye.
And so that passes 6-0-0. And we, at this point, want to go into a discussion, Nancy, on where we'd like to go with next year's contract?
Yeah, I think, again, with the purpose of encouraging and also, you know, to maintain what they've done, and also to make it clear what the expectation is, that the next contract, and again, Eileen, as you suggested, we can probably have you draft it up, should really incorporate some due dates related to when the audits would be done. I think one that you had suggested is December 31st, which is a reasonable time that an audit could be expected to be done by December 31st. If that's submitted, then they would get 100% of the allotment. Do you want me to do the other date too you recommended, Eileen?
Yes.
Gotta get my glasses on, print it out small. Okay, the second would be from January to March. If it wasn't submitted till then, it would be 75%. April to May would be 65%, and later than May 20th would be 50%. Now, if they did not submit an audit, they wouldn't get anything, right, Eileen?
Yes.
So that's a recommended distribution according to Eileen, suggested by Eileen, which sounds reasonable. And I think, you know, my hope is they've done a lot of work to be able to establish procedures, and we've all heard that. And hopefully, that will be maintained so that in December, it's not going to be burdensome, that they'll be able to meet that, and therefore, they should be rewarded for that. But it should be clearly delineated in the contract, so that's the only suggestion I would have in terms of modification. I'm not sure if anyone else would have, any others?
Barbara, you had your hand up?
Can't hear you.
You know, I only hit it three times.
Okay.
I had the same concerns, and if I remember correctly, from skimming it this afternoon when we got it, that there were some policies and procedures, some SOPs that were also needed for the auditors. So I would expect to see, whatever those efficiencies are that are listed now, I would expect to see that those are resolved as well in the next audit, and that they're not carried on into the future, because that's only gonna tighten up your processes overall as well. So it's not only did you get the audit done and did you pass the audit, but whatever were deficiencies in this audit have been remediated and taken care of.
Anybody else have comments? Want to throw Mike Two-Simpson? The way we've done this in the past, the MIA gets, what, four quarterly payments? Is that right, Paul?
Yeah, we used to break it down into four quarterly payments, of July 1st, October 1st, January 1st, and April 1st.
July 1st being the first payment of the fiscal year?
Correct.
And obviously, the audit has not even been submitted yet at that point.
Correct.
So I think we need to consider whether or not these incentives are actually in a place where they can work. Obviously, if the audit is completed by December 31st, and we've made the first two payments, I guess that says, you know, we keep going forward with 100%. I don't understand why, if the audit's not in until May, we would still say you can have 50%. At that point, they've already received 75% of the payments. If we went on the same schedule we've been going on. And so I have some concerns over the increments and the times and the wording that we're gonna put into the contract as far as when they get their payments. Eileen?
So Nancy and I just talked about this off the cuff on the phone this afternoon. So, you know, that's the reason why I wanted to, you know, while I wanted to have time to go over, you know, the logistics of how this, what you just said makes perfect sense. So I guess what I'm looking for is, do you agree with Nancy collectively that there should be some mechanism in there for incentivizing or de-incentivizing, or whatever word you want to use, financially, for late audits or bad audits or that kind of thing? So I guess what I would say is that now that everything is in good shape, the end of the year, it's not a particularly difficult set of books. As long as they keep up with it, which they will be with their bookkeeper, I'm not overly concerned about it at this point. But I will say that, that six months, you know, so if they get their, they get their audit in, the audit complete at the end of December, it means they've had six months after the end, the close of their year to get the audit done. Now, the audit can't take more than two or three days, I couldn't imagine.
It all depends on the audit. The other reason why 12/31 is an important date is because of the auditor. And the auditor switches gears beginning January from audit to tax. So if it's not done by 12/31, they're not gonna get it done before April 15th. The reason why the audit was kind of given to us this week is because the auditor switched gears and he put the audit down. So that was some of the thinking that I had behind 12/31 as well with it.
And it gives them, as long, if they have a bookkeeper in place, there's no reason, their books should be in really good shape to do an audit at the end of, at the end of any month, really. But if the year ends on June 30th, it's well within reason for them to have six months to do a fairly, you know, not a difficult audit. It's not like the town or something like that. So I guess I'll just repeat. Do you have any desire to put those controls in place from a financial perspective so that we can give incentive to whoever's on the board or whoever's in the future of the MIA, you know, as the MIA moves forward? Because it's not, you know, I know we'd love to have Holly and Brian on there forever, but maybe they won't. So, so anyway, that's, that's my thoughts, rambling thoughts.
Thank you. So I guess the point I was gonna go to is that, assuming we make the first payment out of good faith that we're gonna go forward and everything will be fine, the second payment might be contingent upon at least the audit materials having been delivered to the auditor. And then the third payment is gonna start looking for the audit response or the audit report to have come back. And maybe that one becomes forfeit if it takes another two or three months before the audit report comes back. So if it's not backed by the 31st of December, maybe then, at best, they're gonna get 75%. And if it's not backed by whenever the next payment date would be, then the best they could do would be to get to 50% that they have gotten already, and/or some other number, maybe there's a slightly different number you want to put in there. But I guess the numbers, as Nancy presented, that I'm looking at, just look like they, there's a huge reward for not doing anything, because come May, there's only one month left. And they've already received 75% if it goes by the standard process.
But, but no, they wouldn't receive anything up to that point.
Sure that, well, currently, the way we've been going.
If it were done quarterly, yes.
We make quarterly payments starting at the beginning of the year because they need to front the money for their books and their bookkeeper and their, things of that nature.
Okay, which is, which is different than my, I understand what you're saying. But my thought was, they don't get anything until December 31st, and if they, if it's.
Or until the audit is received?
Correct. When the audit is received is the payment time. So, and I'm not saying you have to agree with it, this was what I was thinking about. Cause they wouldn't receive anything till December, and if it was submitted, they'd get the whole thing, all in one, because they've completed. So it's just a different perspective, but I do understand your point too.
Peter, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to hear from Brian and Holly on their feelings about this and, um, if it, does it hurt the M Y A? Or are they amenable to it and so forth?
So as far as when we receive the money, um, we were receiving.
I'm sorry to make you shout out as Brian, but a little louder would help.
As far as when we receive the money, is that better?
Yeah, a little bit.
Um, quarterly was, was, was working before. I would like to see it possibly in a lump sum. Um, and if, if, if it requires having a, an audit to get the lump sum. Uh, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to that. Um, again, it's up to you guys, but, um, the, the thing I am confused about is when, when we just talked about, we were talking about. F Y nineteen and twenty, which July thirty-first or, correct me if I'm wrong, July, July first or July thir- uh, June thirty-first is the end. Of F Y nineteen and twenty. So we were, we were received the seventy-two.
We lost you.
So I think, I think Brian is thinking, I think you guys just, um, voted to say that the seventy-two we're going to get. Now, now we're talking about moving forward and I don't know if Brian was understanding that we were talking about the moving forward and not the money that we're going to get. Cause I heard him talk nineteen twenty. But I'm not sure.
So I'll just repeat from my understanding, we just approved the money for the year nineteen twenty, which is up until June thirtieth of this year. What we're talking about is putting a clause into the next year's contract or to modify the contract so that. It gives you incentive to go ahead and get the con- the, uh, audit in. And the question becomes, do we, do we try and, and parse that out over the year? Do we say there's a deadline? How, how do we deal with that?
Um, I would like to see the partial payments. I don't know how Brian feels about that. Um, but I think I would like to see the partial payments because right now, I, I'm, I have anxiety every day. Especially, you know, we all didn't, uh, didn't, um, plan on the COVID. So the COVID has really put a strain on, um, all of our programs. So, um, you know, it's really a partnership between us and the town. And, um, without that, we really can't, um, run our programs. And now that we have a bookkeeper, um, you know, it'd be nice if our bookkeeper was like Roman and did it. Um, volunteer tearing, but, um, we're going to have to pay that as we go and they're going to have to do a lot of prep work for the audit. So maybe like Nancy said, maybe there are, um, milestones. And, um, when those milestones are met, that we would get, um, some kind of a payment. But that it wouldn't go over what you're saying, um, you know, the deadline is still December thirty-first. And you're not going to get full payment if it's not done by then. So we would have to figure out what the payments would be so that we're not getting most of it before we should.
Right, okay.
What do you think, Brian?
Brian, do you agree with what?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Lon, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape and I, and on a pretty good track. Uh, you mentioned earlier, Tom, that we have, uh, the month of June and two meetings coming. Um, to take Nancy's ideas and Eileen's thoughts and your thoughts and the M Y A thoughts. And come up with the language that we want to propose for. As a subject with contract. I think. Maybe it's just me tonight, but going further without some more, uh, not FaceTime, not Zoom time kind of. Opportunity to do some thinking will probably be somewhat beneficial for another meeting. So that's where I am, Nancy.
All right, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, um, Nancy, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nancy, I, I appreciate the idea, but I agree with Counselor Woods. Um, we've, we've got two more meetings coming up before July first. I'd rather have us be prudential in our deliberations than come up with language that works for us and for the M Y A. And, and, and really hammer down what the expectations are going to be moving forward. I, um, I, I don't want to, I, I don't feel comfortable rushing into something tonight. I'd, I'd like to see something on paper and for all of us collectively to, to take a look at it and, and make sure that, you know, everybody's on the same page. I agree, I do agree, I want you to know, I do agree with what you're saying, Nancy. I just would like, uh, for us to be thoughtful for the next couple of weeks over.
Yeah, and our plan at this point, just a minute Nancy, our plan at this point is to do exactly what you're suggesting.
Okay.
And modify the contract and bring it up in another meeting. Um, all we're trying to do right now is get a consensus from the council as to what kind of direction they want that work to go in. Because we obviously can't talk outside of the meeting as a group. Uh, we could have a few people dock and work with Eileen to come up with a, a, something in conjunction with M Y A. But obviously we can't have a non-meeting to discuss it.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at what Paul sent us. Um, and like I said, this was, I, I, re- respectfully, Paul, I mean, this, this was first time I think all of us saw it was, was today. And I just, you know, for some reason, I felt that there was an anticipation that we were going to talk contract tonight. That's how I've been interpreting part of this conversation, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Barbara, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, you know, um. No matter what, we as the council still have to do share a responsibility to ensure that the money goes to a viable organization. This, you guys have like worked a miracle in like six or seven months, but this is still new behavior. And we need to be able to make sure that if, if for some bizarre reason you guys quit tomorrow. That those policies and procedures are in place to carry forward with the new behaviors that have been put in place. So I am going with Lon on this and I, and if he hadn't said it, I was going to say it. That we need to have some way not to incentivize, but just to ensure. That the policies and procedures are in place from a bookkeeping standpoint and that they are solid. And you can get through an audit again. Because I haven't been on the council for, except for a couple of years, but up until we had this big conversation the last time. Um, it was something that was ongoing for several years. So let's just make sure that we are really comfortable that this is gelled and this is going forward and this is the, this is the way it's going to be. And by golly, um, I'll be the first one to even look at increasing what we give you. Of course, everybody else has to vote on that, but I'm just telling you what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Barbara. Peter, I, just a minute Holly. Peter, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I mean, I guess if you were polling everybody, um, I'll, I'll speak up now and say, yeah, I, I, I think we should. I think checks and balances are a good thing. Um, these folks have done a great job taking step forward. Um, I, I don't have a problem with incentivized incremental payments.
Okay, Holly?
Um, I just wanted, I was, me and Brian, Brian asked me to ask too, was a little confused. So we submitted our budgets for twenty twenty-one already. And, and because of all that came up last year, um, we don't know even where those are. So if we're talking about contract, that would probably be part of that discussion. Because those, that would be the money that would be, um, given to us this upcoming year, twenty twenty-one.
Right, Eileen?
Uh, the council has approved your, your budget and the amount that you've asked for. But, um, the, the taxpayers won't be voting on it or the, the, um, residents won't be voting on it until the twenty-third of June. So, um, kind of everything's up in the air right now. Um, if, if the, um, if the, the budget does not pass and we end up with a default budget, we'll be. Short, um, one point six million dollars. So, um, I'm not saying that we'll be looking to you, but, um, we're going to be looking at everything, um.
Okay, yep.
But so the, the money was originally put in the budget and hasn't been approved. If it's approved, uh, and if the audits get done, uh, we're going to be modifying the contract to put in. Some kind of an incentive statement that says that if you don't get it done in time or by a reasonable time, uh, you end up forfeiting some percentage of the amount of. Uh, and depending upon how late it is, you might forfeit larger amounts.
Correct, okay. Yep.
Okay, Brian, is that reasonable to you? Just yes or no? Thank you. I appreciate that. Um. Is it, Eileen, do we have enough to go on there? Do you need a, a subcommittee to work with you or?
I don't think so, no. We'll come up with something, um, and we'll send out a draft, um, before the next meeting. We'll also send it to, uh, Holly and Brian, uh, and Paul will, will talk to them about it too. Um, and then, uh, you can look it over and see what, I, I think we're kind of all on the same page. Um, and it's something that could be well, um, easily written. Uh, it's just we have to take into consideration all these different year ends and quarters and all those kinds of things. Cause they're actually receiving, um, money for, um, an audit that, uh, the year has already passed. So during, um, nineteen twenty, you're receiving money based on a eighteen nineteen audit. So, you know, you've got all these, and then you've got the next year's budget. So, um, so yeah, I think we can, I, I think we can easily do it, um. In a way that is, um, is comfortable for everyone.
Okay, great. Uh, does anybody else have any comments or suggestions regarding the M Y A and an ongoing contract? Seeing none, Brian and Holly, thank you very much for your help and attendance and, uh, we look forward.
Thank you.
And good work, really good work. Really good work.
Thank you.
Let's see. If you guys want to turn off your videos?
Brian, Holly, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is a discussion of the town emergency order. Which, Eileen, you alluded to in your non-managers' report.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you think we should do the new business? Cause I think the new business would move smoothly. I think the town emergency order might take a little bit of time. Unless you feel, unless you feel otherwise.
I don't feel otherwise. Uh, in fact, that's a good, at least move the, uh, consideration of Eagle Scout project at Waspin Park. At Wasserman Park up.
We, we also have Chief Duke here, so, um, he could do his pretty quickly too, so.
I'm sure we can, thank you. So at this point, if the council doesn't object, and I'm not seeing any objections, we'll move number one under new business for our next point of order. And we'll invite, uh, Dave Roy and. John, J- John Matt to.
John Matty.
John Matty to, uh, unmute and, and, um, turn on their video to join.
So am I good?
Well, welcome to the town council meeting. Sorry to put you through all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your time and consideration. So we are considering an Eagle Scout project at Wasserman Park submitted by Life Scout David Roy. The town council to consider Life Scout David Roy's proposed Eagle Scout project to install a barrier fence on the lower side of the upper basketball court. David, you want to, since I don't suppose Matt Gasparius is here with us, um, I think you want to have any comments before we get started or?
Uh, no.
Okay, we'll let David take it away.
All right, thank you. So hello, my name is David Roy. Uh, thank you very much for letting me meet with you so quickly. It means a lot to me and I'm excited to, uh, get moving on this project. So I have invited my project advisor, John Matty, to, uh, attend the meeting if, John, if you could introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is John Matty and I'm an assistant scoutmaster for troop four two four in Merrimack.
Thank you. So a little bit of background about me, I have been a scout for eight years and a basketball player for nine. Uh, I love going to Wasserman Park. It's a great time always. I, if it's either at playing a leery hoop camp or just playing with my friends' basketball, it's, uh, it's always great. And, uh, the project means a lot to me to put scouts and basketball together to, uh, help the town. And so the purpose of this meeting for me is to inform you about my project, receive your feedback. And ideally receive your approval. I have met with and talked to Miss Gasp- Mr. Gasparius, the, uh, Parks and Raptor. And he likes to play, and he's on board to, uh, uh, get it going. Uh, so now I'd like to vent my thought to you. So, okay, do I have permission to?
Yeah, can you share your screen? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm doing it now. Can you see it?
I can't. Does anybody see it?
Um. Uh, share. Now do you see it?
Hang on, let me see if I can find my way down there.
Yes.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so do you, you see Eagle Scout proposal by David Roy?
I do, with an eagle on it.
All right, cool. So. As I said earlier, I'm a avid basketball player and a camper at a leery hoop camp. Whether it's me and my friend or just playing at the hoop at the camp, uh, our ball would fall down all the way, the hill, multiple times. And this not only keeps track on time for basketball, but it also protects injuries like twisted ankles and scraped knees. So this project will be a barrier fence on the north side of the upper basketball court at Wasserman Park. This fence will be for basketballs from rolling down the hill as well as playing. So as you can see in, uh, the diagram, the red is the fence that I'm planning to build. And there, as you also can see, there is gaps. I have purposely planned that because if the ball goes over or around, I want to make sure it's easy to get to. If it's even harder to get to, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of the fence to have more time to play basketball and less injuries. So if, for those who aren't familiar with where this, uh, hoop is at Wasserman, this map shows it. It is right in between the function hall and the tennis courts. It is, uh, I should have an arrow pointing right to where I plan to build it. Now, we know we want to have a fence and we know the job it needs to do. I've spent weeks thinking about what is the best fence that we could put into play here. So we have the options I considered were a outfield netting fence, as you see in the far left. Uh, a horse, a wooden horse fence in the middle and a chain link fence and a sports netting fence. So. The factors that led me to choose the one I chose were aesthetics, cost, lifespan, sturdiness, and maintenance. So those factors led me to choose a sports netting fence with chain link posts. I believe this is the best option for four reasons. I believe it blends in with the park the best and has the look and feel of Wasserman Park. Uh, two is as opposed to wooden posts, uh, this fence does not need any maintenance to be done. Uh, three is it is the best option to withstand being hit repeatedly by heavy basketballs. These posts will not wobble over time and this netting is vinyl coated to be weather resistant. It is also extra thick for this type of purpose. The, and fourthly is the netting can be removed in the off season if desired. So, uh, for this fence, the cost is a total of about. Yep.
How tall is your fence?
Uh, it plans to be five feet tall.
Five feet tall, okay.
Yep, thank you. Uh, so for this fence, the total cost, uh, comes out to about fourteen hundred dollars. This would not be the cheapest option, although I think it would give the town the best value. Pay for the project, I plan to both. Pay for the project, I plan to both donate my own money from my power washing business as well as fundraise through scouting, for example, a car wash, as you can see in both pictures here. So this is my estimated work plan. I believe it can be completed in three workdays. My dream scenario is that we can get the fence installed in time to use it for this summer's O'Leary Camp because it would be the last summer before I age out as a camper. And I'll give you a minute to look at the work plan.
So, three, three workdays, a total of, what, eleven hours to build and install the fence?
Yeah, that's what I'm estimating.
Okay, and you're setting the poles in concrete?
Yep.
Buried how deep?
Uh, two feet in the ground.
Okay, is that standard?
Yeah, it'd be about a third of the total post length should be in the ground. So it's two was suggested by
Okay.
So, moving on.
And you have the town digging the holes?
Uh, yes, that is, yeah. Mr. Gisparius said that the, the DPW will dig the holes for me.
Okay, so that's, that's basically an additional donation to your project.
Yes.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, David, how did you come up with a height of five feet? What did you base that on?
Well, I tried to picture whenever somebody shoots and how high it would go over. And I feel like five feet, it wouldn't ever really, it would sometimes, but most of the time it would not go over five feet bouncing over where the fence is planning to be. So I thought five feet would be a good length.
So this, this is a ball bouncing off of the backboard and then, and then down towards the hill, so.
Or like they tipped the ball because they were trying to steal it and it went down the hill. That would be stopped.
Okay.
All right.
That good, Peter? All right.
Okay.
Questions at this point? Uh, so go ahead, Dave, thank you.
All right, moving on, I have, I did receive, I talked to Mrs. DPW and she gave me an alternative option. I have not had yet to completely talk this through with her in full detail, but I would love to take your feedback and incorporate it into my discussion with her. She believes it would be a fence that is completely removable to allow for others or other uses of that space. With my approach, with the chain link posts and the sports netting, the nets would be removable, but the posts would be permanent. Uh, this would provide for the benefit of long-term stability because as you can see in the picture that she is suggesting that fence that is at Bishop Field, it does lean quite a bit and there are also some decent sized holes on the bottom side. And if a ball is rolling, I don't want it to be able to go right under because that would defeat the purpose. Okay. So now I
David, I hate to interrupt you again, but so those pictures are both the same type of fence?
Uh, so
Solid and one that's been there a while?
The difference is, this one is not, uh, the suggestion from the DPW is not cemented into the ground. It basically, you dig a small hole and then you place a, like cylinder that holds that pole into place. And then you can just take it right out and for easier removal and complete removal. And then with my suggestion, it is, they're cemented into the ground, so you cannot re- remove my posts.
I, I get it, thank you.
Yep, okay. So, I have now explained my problem and solution and approach. I would like to have some time now to have a discussion of what you think and you can give me suggestions, comments, questions, and feedback. So. Does anyone have any questions or anything else?
Lon Woods. Lon, you're muted still.
Move on.
I, I got you unmuted, go ahead.
When you talked with the DPW about the alternative fencing, she showed you, what, what was the difference in the cost?
Uh, cost wasn't a huge difference because, so this, the fence that she suggested would probably take away two hundred or three hundred dollars from the fourteen hundred dollar, uh, cost.
And are you planning on further discussions with her?
Yes, I am. So I would try to see what you guys think and your feedback and then have a further discussion with her and really decide on which
I would direct you back to her to discuss that alternative fencing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Ms. Koenig, Councilor Koenig. David, I, I think part of the problem too is that where that fence, where you want to put that fence, it's pretty much ledge over there. And I think that's why she's suggesting some kind of, I call it a breakaway fence. That she's suggesting is because of, of the ledge and she might be figuring that she can't get down even twelve inches, a little, two feet. So, that's something that when you discuss it with her, you need to ask her about the ledge that might be in that area.
Okay, so you're saying that in that area, there's most likely rock and you can't go really two feet into the ground to really
Right, there, there are several ledges. When we brought a water line down, we actually had to move the water line around some of the bigger boulders that were in there. The other thing is, is that a break, what I call the breakaway fence might be a little better in that situation because if you're going full tilt and trying to, you know, save a ball or going after a loose ball and, and you, you go into the fence, you know, with, with the sports netting with a cemented pole, there's more after injury than a breakaway fence. Like you're standing next to where if you go full tilt, it will just go over on you and, and you won't get that kind of whiplash, quick stop.
Okay.
And then another issue is, we, we talked about it here, is that we, we could dig for these, for this breakaway fence, we could dig down X amount inches in there and just put covers over it. We did that when we, council, we did that when we did the volleyball courts over at Watson Park. We have the sleeves, the volleyball poles to go into, and then in the winter time, we take it out and then we cap off the, cap off the hole. So we always know where the hole is, but it's, it's safety, it's a safety feature too. So people aren't going to be tripping or running into a pole or things of that sort, that after, when the fence comes down.
So like you're saying, in the winter, it can fully close off and there would be no tripping?
Yes, correct. There'd be a cap put over it.
Okay.
Barbara?
Yeah, Dave, so what is your planned implementation date or your, your construction date?
Oh, well, I'd like to get it going as soon as possible, although I have a couple more steps after this before I can really start. Because I have, this is my last year of being a camper at O'Leary and I'd like to use it. So I don't have a date yet, but I would say as soon as possible.
Because the only problem in, I think maybe this is for Eileen, um, the park is closed.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm not sure how that is going to affect your beginning implementation date, but that's probably something that you need to have a chat about.
Uh, so, so Tom?
Go ahead, Eileen.
Uh, so Barbara, I think I must have not explained it properly before, but the park is not closed. It's just certain aspects of the park are closed. The basketball courts are closed, but the tennis courts are open and we, we, and the dog park's open. So, um, the park itself is not closed.
So David, how many people would be helping you with this?
Um, it could be as limited as like nine in case, uh, if it, if phase one doesn't actually start or when we can gather in groups of more than ten, nine would definitely be doable.
Okay, because you knew, you knew what I was thinking about. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Peter, did you raise your hand? No, anybody else have any discussion at this point? I, I just want to say that I understand the complication with the fencing and I, I kind of agree with what I'm hearing from Paul. There's, and from Lori at the DPW, that field wants to be used for Easter egg hunts. It wants to be used for various other things. Um, and so having those poles cemented in the ground and the crossbar across the top at five feet could be a problem at times other than when people are wanting to play basketball.
Yeah, so I do understand about the posts, but my plan was to not have any crossbars because it would be, that would be an extremely safety issue with hitting your neck. I would just do four feet apart and then pull it nice and tight to make sure it would be uh, and not sagging.
Even four feet apart, I mean, we'd have to do something to mark them very well so that people would, would hopefully not run into them. Um, and then the concern about the strength, I, I guess with the sports netting there, you'd have a little bit less problem unless somebody hits the pole itself. As far as hitting it at a dead run, but there, there's still, I think you need to very carefully consider the options with Ms. Barrett. As to what is the best option for that area, considering you're going to have, what, one, two, three, four? Four freestanding pieces of fence in there or five, I guess. And, and that's a lot of poles sprinkled along there along a basketball court.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other thoughts or comments? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. Appreciate the hard work that you put into it.
Thank you.
The question I have to ask is, and I looked at what you had drawn on your presentation with the overhead that I'm seeing here on, on my laptop. What is the distance from the, what is the proposed distance from the edge of the basketball court to where you want to build the net?
Right, so we decided nine feet because at nine feet, it was, we, we thought it was far enough away from the court that you wouldn't really run into it, but right past nine feet, it starts to go pretty steep and it would be, and uneven. So it wouldn't, it would be pretty difficult to put a fence. So at nine feet seemed like the right length.
I mean, what, I mean, once the ball rolls down the hill, it's going to get nine feet before potentially it's going to hit the fence. To me, the players just could be running off the court and running downhill. It's not like, it's going to be right up on the court. You know, it's not like, you know, you know, arena football where everything is up close and tight. It is, there's a gap there. So, I'm, I'm trying to under, I'm, I'm trying to understand based on what DPW has shared with you, the concerns they have about anchoring in those particular poles. I just, i- if you were anchoring poles next to the court, then yeah, you've got a safety issue, but nine feet, it to me is, is a sufficient distance. So I'm trying to understand um, what the thought process, process was behind. Can, can you elaborate for me, please?
Yeah, I can. So basically, what Mr. Koenig said and also DPW was trying to say is that it's unsafe for other uses of it and especially when you take out the net, it's going to be dangerous when there's poles uh, just without netting and
Well, I, I, I get that part, but the, the whole point, the, the whole point of, of the fencing was to protect the basketball court.
Right.
So I, 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 and, and I've been down there. I, I, I guess, I guess me being dumb and I apologize, are there other uses that go on at, at, at that particular court that I'm not aware of?
No, that's also, I was kind of confused about that too, but Mr. Koenig said that there's like Easter egg hunts and other things that, could you elaborate on that, Mr. Koenig, other area? You're muted, Mr. Koenig.
I don't know exactly what items they might have been considering specifically. I know that there are various things that happen in the park that have attracted large crowds. But, and the only one that I'm familiar with is when they've done Easter egg hunts in the past and they have, they use multiple different fields. Uh, and they have kids go screaming across those fields with their baskets. But, Peter, do you want to add something?
Yeah, Tom, also they do the Halloween Fun Day, brings in a lot of kids. And I think they use that general area as well for their haunted house and their trails and stuff. So, I could see, at first I was in favor of the solid posts, but I could see, you know, and after dark in that event, somebody running around and maybe running into it.
So I have a question. You're saying, but I, when would, when is your date that you would say that the fence should be removed for the winter? And how much activity is the overlap of where there would be no fence and until like there's no more activity going on because there's snow?
And that's a much better question for Matt to try and help you to comprehend. And, and I'm not trying to shoot down your project. I'm just trying to, to talk through some of the ideas. I think you've done a great presentation. And I think you have a definite positive program to go forward with and I can understand the need for it. If it was closer to the court, it would be more associated with the court. Nine feet away puts it more in the middle of a field, which potentially could be used for other things or at other times. And so
I kind of, I disagree with you. I think that, uh, the, when I go back, let me go back to, uh,
The picture, that would be great.
It, uh, it's right, it's, nine feet is a lot shorter than you really think. And I have pictures that I could forward to you or show the nine foot mark wouldn't, it's not really, like, there's a tree there and there's a thicket, like a bu- bunch of brush. And that kind of, like, that's where the cork, I think is kind of more associated. And I think it wouldn't really be in the way of a field and especially with the, the side, the side fence pieces, it would be more associated with the hoop.
What hut is that that you have listed?
There's a little, kind of like a, it's like a picnic table with like a cover over it and a bench in the middle.
Okay, I apologize. I'm not visualizing that very well, so.
Okay, yeah.
Arts and Crafts building, there was some other things.
Yeah, you see the little rectangle above the basketball court? That's probably the hut.
Okay. So you're in between the basketball court and the arts and crafts building?
Yes. And I would say, I would say that length would probably be forty feet.
Okay.
Or maybe fifty feet, forty or fifty.
I was going to say, because nine feet out of forty is, is almost twenty-five percent.
Okay, wow.
So you're at twenty percent of the distance or maybe, maybe less. I, I just, I wanted to have a better understanding of, of how much area is there, yard space. I don't know what, like you said, if they do Halloween stuff, uh, whether it gets down to the arts and crafts, I think it does in between the function hall and the arts and crafts building. Uh, but I'm not visualizing the slope right there. And so I don't know, I, I, above it, it's getting utilized for various programs, but.
Okay.
And so I, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying, let's, let's try to make something that's as, as flexible as we can without being something that's going to tear apart in three years. And, and maybe, maybe those two things are mutually exclusive. I could certainly believe it, so.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other thoughts? So do you, do you have any more presentation that you wanted to make at this point, David, or?
Well, just, I was going to explain that I have three more steps going forward. Somebody asked about my timeline. I need to get my troops approval and then Arrowhead district approval. And then I also need to finalize defense details like we were discussing here with either the outfield fence or the sports netting fence. Uh, and also, I'm, I'm, uh, the goal here for me is to uh, approach, approve of the fence and in a future date, I can really discuss with Mr. Gisparius and Mrs. Barrett the, the pros and cons of each fence here and make a decision. So, I just want
I'm all, I'm all for that. I'm all, I'm all for that personally. I think approving the fence is a great idea and allowing you to work it out with Ms. Barrett and Mr. Casperius. To try and understand the best option to get put in there, but, um, we have just a few more comments if you give us a second. Bill, did you have something?
Well, the, it, it's a thought in, in looking at, um, the memo we got from Matt and looking at David's presentation, Parks and Rec is scheduled to meet on June seventeenth. And I'm, I'm wondering if we could ask Parks and Rec to meet sooner so that Scout Roy could present the presentation that he has. But since I think Parks and Rec is more, would be more attuned as to what might be a more suitable need for that particular area, that they may be able to provide Scout Roy with some better ideas as to what might be, um, a- appropriate to accomplish a goal that he's seeking to do while also, you know, mitigating some of the safety concerns that we've talked about tonight. I'd, I'd like to s, I'd like to get some by, I guess, for me, based on what I've heard tonight. Um, you know, and I, I don't wanna discourage Scout Roy. Like I, like I alluded to earlier, this is, this was an excellent presentation. And he's done a dynamite job. I think it would be good to see if we can get, uh, Parks and Rec to meet sooner and later so that, um, they can brainstorm and maybe come up with some ideas as to, you know, might be a better alternative than, um, some of the concerns that we've talked about tonight. That's just off the top, off the top of my head, just, just thinking about it, so.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. They would definitely have some good input for me and, uh, could be a part of that discussion of deciding which fence would be best for this purpose. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any input? Nancy?
Amazing. I remember, I mean, okay, first of all, I just wanna compliment you on the clarity of your presentation.
Thank you.
You can tell you've done Zoom before, unlike us adults. You're very comfortable with all of the components and presented and all the rest of it, so my compliments to you. And I do agree with what's been said before, I think, and again, Tom, you would know the, um, uh, suggest the proceeds, procedure by which we do this, but I would like to be able to approve it with the condition that additional discussion were to be made with Parks and Rec, finalize the exact type of, of fencing. I think the concept is great, but I think the suggestions that Tom and Bill have made about that are right on the money.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's, that's my goal here. That's what I think we should do. Thank you.
Welcome.
Was that a motion?
If you'd like it to be, it certainly can be.
Second.
Second.
So a motion was made by Nancy. I'm gonna paraphrase it. Tell me if you got it right, to approve the, uh, installation of a fence alongside the upper basketball court by Scout David Roy. Uh, with the stipulation that he continued to discuss with Parks and Rec Director Casperius and DPW Director Lori Barrett. Uh, or DPW, um, I'm not sure what her title is, but with Lori Barrett, um, type and, and location of the fence. And, and that with their approval and hopefully in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Committee, uh, he can move forward with this, uh, as soon as possible.
You read my mind.
Barbara, was that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if there are any other, is there any other discussion on that motion? Bill?
Uh, just a quick comment. I'm, and I'm sure the people that are watching know that for, and to Scout Roy and to, to Mr., by the way, Mr. Matty, thank you, uh, for sponsoring, uh, Scout Roy. Uh, we appreciate your, uh, vol- volunteerism and your, your dedication to working with, with, you know, young men like, like David is, so I, I wanna thank you and, and Troop 424, so thank you. But I, I, I don't like to speak for all the councils, but I think we all can agree, uh, when we get an Eagle Project proposal before the council, we absolutely, I mean, this is the best part of our job. I, I, at least I think it's the best part of our job. Being able to, uh, to support these particular projects, so, um, no roadblocks here, David. We, um, just, just what we hope, we want you to follow the process and, uh, we look forward to, uh, you getting your, you know, upon completion, uh, earning your Eagle Scout, cause that's a big deal, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for doing this, making Wasserman Park, you know, one of our crown jewels, you know, continue to be, uh, you know, a, a bright stone in our community. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me. That's great.
You're, you're welcome.
Hey, and I, I can't say that any better than, than these others have, except that, uh, you did an exemplary job making that presentation. You worked your way through a much tougher question and answer period than many of the scouts that have presented, so you've really done very well. And, uh, you're very clear and concise and informative. That's, that, that is tremendous asset on your part. And we've put that effort. Um, if there are no other discussions, we'll move to a vote. Yes, David?
I just have a question about, uh, logistic.
Okay.
So, you said, uh, something about the donation of digging the holes. Is there a cost for the DPW digging the holes? Cause Mr. Casperius told, made it seem like it was, uh, they did it for you. Is that true?
Well, I, I'm not trying to suggest that we would bill you for it, but it would be an in-kind service. You might want to include, um, some cost factor in your, uh, accounting that says that X number of dollars was donated as in-kind uh, services in helping to dig the holes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Just, just for completeness.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? We'll move to a vote. Lon Woods?
Woods, aye.
Myself, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
And Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes six, zero, zero. If you need for us to sign something, if you could get it into Town Hall, they can get it into either my box or, or I, somebody from Town Hall can, can sign whatever you need to for approval from the town. Um, we are asking that you continue to work with, uh, Matt and Lori to try and understand the best, uh, functional and usable fencing situation there, and appreciate your inputs and your, your time in this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you for your input.
And thank you, Mr. Matty. We appreciate your sticking it out with us. Is there any other comments from the council at this point? Before we move on? Okay.
I, uh, stop.
Be a good thing, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We will, uh, I'm gonna kick you guys off of video. And thank you for, very much for joining us.
It was refreshing that somebody disagreed with the chairman at this point.
Respectfully, though.
Okay. Um, we can go on to number two on your new business. Uh, because Matt Duke is with us. The, uh, donation acceptance for the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department. Made it by interim chief Matthew Duke. Um, the town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a check in the amount of five thousand dollars from Digital Federal Credit Union for the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department for the purchase of the following equipment. One, a steel TS four twenty gas-powered rotary saw with accessories. One steel MS three ninety-one gas-powered chainsaw with accessories, and three, L-CART Chief, one and a half inch nozzles. Uh, two L-CART XD two and a half inch nozzles and one L-CART XD one and a half inch nozzle. And one L-CART gated Y two and a half inch pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article eight fifteen. As I understand it, this is to help outfit the new fire truck that we've authorized you to look into acquiring.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and, uh, that was a tough act of, oh, I'm not sure that my presentation is up to the par of, of David's. He did a fantastic job. But, um, yes, uh, DCU has generously, uh, offered to donate to the town five thousand dollars for, um, uh, projects or projects that, that the fire department, uh, would like to undertake. And as you mentioned and, and read, we'd like to purchase a couple of saws, a new chainsaw and a new rotary saw. A set of new nozzles that will, as you mentioned, also will help us, uh, outfit the new fire engine that we're currently in the pr- process of purchasing. And the, uh, the gated Y also is a piece of equipment that, uh, we'll install on the back of the fire engine, to, uh, allow us to make two outlets out of one essentially. I can certainly provide a more detailed explanation of any of that that you'd like, but I, I don't want to belabor the point. It's already getting late and you have a lot of work to do, I'm sure.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns, issues or thoughts? Bill?
I just, I have to ask the question. I don't know what a gated Y is, chief. Can you, can you educate me, please?
Sure, my apologies. It's basically.
No, it's okay.
It's a device that turns, uh, one outlet into two. So it's a, uh, you have the discharge off the truck where the water comes out. You attach the Y there and it splits it into two outlets. That are, that can be separately controlled right at that point.
Okay, and the, the follow-up on the, on the, on the steels, which is, which is really good stuff, by the way. I'm impressed. Um, do they come with any type of, uh, a limited warranty? Do you know?
I believe that as soon as we put them on the fire truck, uh, it voids the warranty from steel, but we do have a good relationship with the dealer. Um, the salesman that we deal with is actually a firefighter himself, so if we have an issue, historically, we've had, uh, we've had good luck with, with getting service and getting, getting support.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Peter Albert?
I just, uh, you know, this, this is great that DCU has helped out the fire department. Um, and as always, again, there they are stepping up, helping out one of our, uh, departments and maybe we can get a letter of thank you, uh, to them, uh, from, uh, from the town.
Definitely would wanna send them a letter for their, thanking their continuing and ongoing support for the town.
Yes, we will.
Any other comments? Can we get a motion to accept the, the, uh, donation?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council accept and expend a check in the amount of five thousand dollars from Digital Federal Credit Union for the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department for the purchase of the following equipment. One, steel TS four twenty gas-powered rotary saw with accessories. One steel MS three ninety-one gas-powered chainsaw with accessories. Three, L-CART Chief, one and a half nozzles. Two, L-CART XD, two and a half nozzles. One, L-CART XD, one and a half nozzles. And one, L-CART gated Y, two and a half. Pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five hyphen B and Charter Article eight hyphen fifteen. That furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any paperwork necessary to accept and expend. And furthermore, uh, on behalf of Council Albert, that a letter of our gratitude and thanks be sent to Digital Federal Credit Union for their continued collaboration and partnership, uh, with the town of Merrimack.
Second.
Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barb. I'm not gonna repeat the whole thing. If anybody has any questions or, or comments, please bring them up at this point. We'll let the recording go with the motion. Um, we'll go for a vote. Lon?
Woods, aye.
And myself, yes. Nancy Harrington? Besides being muted?
Yes.
Thank you. Peter Albert?
Yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
And Barbara Healy?
Aye.
And so that passes six, zero, zero. Thank you, Chief Duke.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, chief.
I know you're sad to be leaving, chief.
I, I'm sure he is.
Ran out of the room.
That was pretty fast. I'm guessing we don't have, uh, to keep going on fo- forward on this so we can go back to number two under new business?
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chairman. Could we, could we, could we please have a two-minute recess to use the facilities?
Why don't we take a, a council five-minute recess? Come back in five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we're all back. I don't know where we stand with respect to the five minutes. Nick, are you?
We're, we're good to go.
We're good to go, okay. So we'll bring the council back into session at this point. Um, looking at the agenda, I was thinking that maybe we should handle number three under new business really quickly because I don't expect that to be a very long one. All around the line, but I don't know what they're here for. They may be here just to listen. Um, but let's, if we could take up number three, which is the town council to consider the nomination to reappoint Nelson Disco as a member on the Seahegen River Local Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a second from Peter. So Bill's made the motion. Bill, do you wanna speak to that?
Very quickly, tremendous thanks to Nelson Disco for his continued service to the town of Merrimack. I certainly hope that we all have his energy when, when, I hate to say this, but when we're his age, it's amazing what he continues to do and he's been a very active member with the S R L A C now and again, continues to be a tremendously effective advocate for our community. So thank you very much, Nelson, for stepping up and continuing to serve our community. We really appreciate it.
I, I assuming the caller knows to hit star nine if they want to be a participant in a discussion. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the reappointment of Nelson Disco?
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
I, yes. As we go through a roll call, please signify. Lon Woods, and you're muted, Lon.
Yes, but I'm muted. Oh, okay.
We got it. Thank you.
Would you?
All right. And Tom Kana, yes. Nancy Harrington?
Yes.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
And Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay. That passes six zero zero to reappoint Nelson Disco.
Thank you, Nelson.
Thank you very much, Nelson. We appreciate it. So at this point, let's move back to number two under old business, which is to discuss the town emergency order that is currently in place. Eileen, do you want to start off that discussion?
Yes. I had hoped that this would not be a, a place where we would take necessarily take formal action, but I think it's important that probably at every meeting for a while, as things start opening up and as, as town halls and and the governor starts loosening up the, the restrictions that we're currently under, that we should talk about, you know, possible things that we might like to do. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about was, has to do with opening the building of town hall to the public. So as you know, we've all been in here and we've been working, but we have not had the building open to the public. So we had initially thought of an earlier date, but have not been able to get the supplies, namely Plexiglas for putting up the petitions and protections for the employees and, and visitor, patrons? Patrons for, for town hall. So we're told now that, that, that material will be available and, and those modifications will be able to be made by June fifteenth. So I just wanted to say, without formally saying it, because until you actually have your goods in hand these days, it can be backordered over and over again. So my, my, I, I would not be comfortable with opening town hall, nor would, would some of the employees be comfortable without having those protections in place. So, so that's what, that's what I'm thinking about is June fifteenth. All right.
Yeah. And you have a, a meeting scheduled for June eleventh.
Yes.
By the way, we can make a decision whether to go forward with June fifteenth, but.
Yes.
We can move forward with the understanding that June fifteenth is a tentative date.
So.
Somebody else has input.
So the, the thought is that we, in addition to having, you know, temporary or, or maybe permanent petitions and things like that for the staff and the public, we would have marks on, you know, temporary markers delineating the six-foot distances. And we would also, using the, the six hundred and seven thousand dollars that we had talked about, hiring someone or, or a volunteer that, and we were thinking about somebody from the, from the volunteers that the police department uses to be a sort of greeter. So the person would be standing there and they would say, you know, you could, you're, you can go in now, you know, sort of like the grocery stores do. The, the time would not, it wouldn't take longer for people. It's just that they might be standing outside instead of standing inside. So that person would be wearing a mask. They would ask people to wear a mask. And if they didn't have a mask, we, we were able to acquire quite a bit of, of surgical masks from the Paul was able to go as, as he was saying at, at one of our meetings, I think you said eight, nine hundred and fifty surgical masks that we were able to get from the state. So we're, you know, we, we have the, we have the P P that we've, we'll, we feel comfortable with. We would also provide, you know, obviously the employees would be wearing gloves. There seems to be people are, are seem to consider wearing gloves not to, to be almost like a placebo effect where you think you're safe, but you're actually touching your face and touching all other things. So we, again, we've been able to get a, a really good gallons of hand sanitizer for people as they come in. So we've put a lot of thought into it. Paul's done an awful lot of work. We've spoken to, to, to someone. And, and we want to make it safe, but we also don't want it to be, look like a prison or something like that. We want to make sure that people understand that they're always welcome here at town hall, but we want everybody to be safe. So that's kind of what my thoughts are for opening the buildings. And that would include the police station who, who already ha- are set up and for that same type of thing. Do you have any comments about that? Peter? Peter? You're mute. I can't hear you.
And here I was laughing at all you guys. Um, no, not, I guess I, I'm good with everything you've said there, Eileen. I, I was going to touch upon, are we going to discuss what that gentleman had mentioned in opening comments about the six-foot park or anything like that?
Yes, right now I'm just talking about town hall, but we'll get to that. Yes, definitely.
Lyra?
Yeah, just for information's sake, the governor was on five thirty on W M U R today. And he is saying that probably the stay-at-home order for probably another two, maybe three weeks, but he's looking at two as well. But the state of emergency will probably stay in place for as long as that we're still having new cases here in New Hampshire. So although that doesn't affect us because we're a municipality, I think it's something just to know what's happening out there in the rest of the world. The only thing I want to say there, Eileen, is skip the gloves. Gloves make me nervous. People start touching everything and everything and then some with gloves and then they touch their face and that's more of a hazard than it is a help. So I would lose the gloves. And are you going or is your intention to say that anyone who enters town hall must wear a mask? Because that's what it sounds like to me when you are saying that you will have masks available for people.
I'm not sure about that. I don't want to get into calling the police on somebody. But I guess what we would do is we would offer the person, much like Lynn Christensen was talking about regarding boating, off, offer to have the person be, have their transaction taken, taken care of to the best of our ability outside, on a table or at their car. But we're, we're hoping that people will be, you know, will be respectful of that.
Yep. And, and I think, you know, you are going to find people, you know, folks who, you know, the minute they put something on their face, they get very claustrophobic. So I think you'll just have to play with that when it happens.
Yes. Yes.
Any other comments regarding the, the opening of the building type of a process? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eileen, are we going to have any markers on the ground delineating six feet? So that? Yes, okay.
Outside and inside.
Perfect. And how are you gonna, I don't want to get in the weeds, but how are you, are you gonna wrap the line towards the courthouse? Or are you going to wrap the line towards Papoose-Ciclic Road?
Haven't thought about it yet.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Reasonable question.
Any other comments on the opening of the buildings? Specifically? I, I think people are in general agreement with you, Eileen, to, to go forward with those procedures. And as you pointed out, it would probably be at the earliest of June fifteenth. And we will certainly review it at our meeting on the eleventh to make sure that, that we're prepared to, to go forward with that step. But at this point, unless somebody has a dying urgency, in which case they need to contact individuals in town hall to discuss those, we will continue with the process that we're in right now where people can drop off material in the drop box. They can contact the different departments directly and make arrangements. They can mail in, they can go online to do most of the business of town hall the way we have been up until now. And the phones have been answered and people are available the entire time, even though they're not necessarily all in the office at town hall, they are answering the phone from their department. So if you have a question, feel free to call. Eileen, you wanted to say something more? I'm not hearing you if you're talking.
Okay. So what I wanted to say is that if somebody has some kind of pressing need to, you know, actually meet with and, and have a, a physical transaction, people on a, we don't strongly encourage this. We, we ask people to please use the services, but we, we do make exceptions and we'll make appointments with people and go out, have a table out, outside to accommodate a person here and there. So we, we're, you know, I, I, I think we're, I think we're doing pretty well as far as, you know, at least I haven't gotten any negative feedback. Most of the feedback I've gotten is, wow, they're answering the phones. It's clerk stuff. They get, that, you know, I mean, to be fair, they get, I think Diane said today that they came in today and they, there was ninety-seven voicemails when they arrived. So it's a lot of calls. So, okay.
Thanks. And I was trying to imply exactly what you said. By appointment only and under special cases would, but, but we're not, we're not slamming the door in anybody's face. We will deal with whatever problem in some fashion.
Exactly.
Continue and.
We are here. Yes. Okay. So. All right. So I wanted to, Barbara kind of stole my thunder a little bit there. So I wanted to say again, another example of, which I'll bring up periodically when I see it. New Hampshire Municipal Association, as I had said earlier, has been very informative and been involved. So because we don't have a mayor, we don't get to have the meetings with the governor. So they have phone calls. I'm not sure how often, but they have, they have meetings with either Zoom meetings or phone call meetings with the mayors of the state, which oftentimes are communities that are much smaller than us and mayors that are only ceremonial mayors. So anyway, so New Hampshire Municipal Association gave us a briefing, a written briefing, which I'll email to you as well, because I just got it hot off the press about some of the things that Barbara was talking about. And one of the things they said was the stay-at-home order will replace, stay in place at least for the short term, for the next couple of weeks. It will look the same as it does now. The governor is taking things each week at a time and learning from other states' mistakes. But the most important part of this is, he says, the ten or more person gathering prohibition will remain in effect for the foreseeable future. So, so anyway, that just kind of gives you some, some of, a little of the background of what's going on at the state. So on to the skate park. We, I asked Matt to prepare something for me and Peter had asked some questions about it. We, there, I was surprised. I thought there would be an awful lot more skate parks around here. And there, there really aren't. So I asked him to call at Peter's behest. The places sort of in our area or similar to us. So the only one that's actually open right now is in Milford. The other ones that are open are in Exeter and New Market, which as you know, aren't near here. Nashua is currently closed. Manchester doesn't have one. Again, very surprising. So I think everybody is waiting for the governor to give advice on, you know, his guidance on opening these. And I, we get, we're on the manager's listserv, the town manager's listserv. And there's a lot of discussion going on about all of these types of things, recreational types of things. And the, most people are saying, we're talking about it, we're planning for it, you know, such as summer camp, but we can't do anything, or we don't feel comfortable doing anything without direct guidance from the governor. So he has not provided that yet. So I asked, I, I sent a text to Dick Kench today asking him about summer camp, which would also include some of these other things, you know, sports related or recreation kind of related. And he said that, let's see. He's, I asked him if he was, the governor was planning on making announcements on those particular things tomorrow at his press conference because it would be, it, it would be helpful for us to know it tonight since we're not going to have another meeting potentially for another couple of weeks. And he said, there's a possible announcement tomorrow, but more likely next week. So anyway, that's on camps and all kinds of things. So I kind of put in my, my two cents about, you know, we're waiting especially for summer camp and things like that. People are getting anxious. So we're, we're really waiting for that. So I think that's the answer for most of the things is that we, as you have done to this point, have waited for the governor to, you know, lead the way and give us guidance. We, we talked about, you know, we've been exploring everything. We, you know, you go down one path and you end up going down this rabbit hole. So, you know, we started thinking about summer camp and, you know, I'm still on the same topic, by the way. So we're, we're talking about summer camp and waivers that parents might sign so that we don't end up getting sued if people, if the children get COVID. And we got advice from Primex, our property and liability carrier, basically saying that you can't. basically saying that you can't, um, you really can't be immune from people suing you. And people can't really sign a waiver for something like that. But he said, um, uh, reading, you know, um, in layman's terms, because I don't speak law. But, um, he said that we really need to have, uh, guidance that comes from a, from a authoritative source. So, um, I think that that is, um, that kind of sums up what my recommendation to you is that we wait for guidance from the governor, um, having to do with all of these things. I know there's gra- draft guidance for certain things like summer camp, day camps. Um, but again, it's just a, it's a draft that hasn't been formally authorized. So, it's kind of where I am.
So I think I was listening most of the time.
Oh.
And I am not sure that I heard you say specifically how you feel as far as the skateboard park is concerned. Except. You don't want to open anything at this point. Is that correct?
I personally, I personally am waiting for guidance from the governor, which we do not have yet.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? Bill?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eileen, did you call the town of Milford to determine the level of traffic of users at the skateboard park there? The, the facility there is huge. So, and, and Nashua having two skateboard parks. I'm just curious to know whether they've seen an uptick in traffic.
No, I did not speak to them. Matt, because Berias did. Uh, Nashua isn't open at this point. And, you know, I, I think, um, one of the concerns for, for us would be that, um, you know, our small skate park might get inundated from people out of town because there's a close. So we wanna, you know, just like the governor's doing with, with the other states, we're trying to, uh, do things in concert with each other.
Okay.
Eric?
Yeah, well, I, I, I was gonna say, can't mention my concerns with Eileen just did about, you know, Nashua's are closed and several of the areas are closed. Um, a- and, and people coming here and, uh, it was highlighted in the union leader this, uh, today. Uh, a similar issue dealing with, uh, the football field at West High that they left unlocked and to allow people to use it, but then teams from all over the place have been going down there and using it. And they've had an ongoing issue. So, um, you know, that was just one of the things that made me think of, uh, you know, other people from surrounding communities inundating it.
So I would expect, what I'm hearing anyway, am I still on? Um, I'm hearing from, what I hear from Dick is that, um, we should hear an answer, have an answer by the end of next week. So, you know, you can either have another meeting or you can authorize me at this meeting to go ahead with certain things in relation to the governor's, um, you know, aspects of it, like, you, maybe you want to say to me, um, if the governor authorizes this, then it's okay to open, um, with the, you know, using the same guidelines that the governor recommends.
Anybody else have any comments? So Nancy?
Well, just about that last comment you made, Eileen, I think that's a very reasonable kind of thing. Because if in fact there are changes that, with reasonable guidelines that you can interpret and know what they mean. Um, and it's two to three weeks before we meet, that's a delay that probably is unnecessary. So I would personally feel comfortable being able to give you the authority based upon that. Maybe notifying us obviously. So if we had any, um, problems, then we could respond to that. But to have to wait for us to meet, I think is, uh, it really puts it out further than it needs to be.
Barbara?
Yeah, I, I agree with Nancy. I think we can go that route as long as the governor has opened up that segment. Because remember, he has the science. He has, you know, Dr. Ben and, and all of his epidemiological scientists working on this. So, y- you know, for us, you know, the little town of Merrimack here, to go in line with what the governor is doing, at least it's based on science. It's not just something that we're doing based on what we think we need. So I would agree. As, as long as the governor and the task force comes out with, you know, that as part of the reopening strategy and we can go with whatever their recommendations are, because they're just not gonna say, open it. They're gonna give you some recommendations that you have to follow to do that. Um, I would say we're fine.
Okay. Any, any other comments? I, I hate to kick the can down the road. I think, I, I would like to think that we could make reasonable decisions and, and judgments based on the knowledge that we have in our community. But it sounds like, um, several of us are in line with the idea you just presented, Eileen, that, um, we wait and hear a- at least for yet another week from the governor and allow you to, um, to make a, a management decision to move forward based on being able to accept and understand what the governor's guidance and/or his task force, uh, would be. I, I'm sure we need a motion to that effect to give you that authority, uh, between now and the eleventh of June. But if the governor is not gonna say anything until the fifth, we're only talking about another five days before we would be meeting, or six days. Um, but anyway, we would still need that motion to move forward on that track. Bill?
I mean, I, Eileen has already floated the idea that Town Hall's gonna open up on June fifteenth and that the council is gonna be afforded the opportunity during that June eleventh meeting to have that particular, you know, further discussions. I, I almost would feel, have us weigh in on the governor's recommendations next week at that particular meeting. That way it's a little bit more definitive as to the direction that we're giving Eileen. And, and this has nothing to do with, 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 with what, with what Nancy and Barbara are suggesting, because I, I don't necessarily disagree with that. We are gonna be meeting on the eleventh. I think that poses a, a more better opportunity for us as a council to collectively meet and discuss it one last time so that Eileen has her charge and knows exactly what we're asking of her on June fifteenth. I think it, if a motion should come forward, giving her that little bit of latitude. You know, I, Eileen's not one to second guess, but I don't want to put her in a position that would force her to, to second guess something. I'd rather allow the council, the council to have the opportunity to come back and talk about it on the eleventh. At least that's, that's how I, that's how I'm thinking right now.
Thank you. Eileen?
Thank you.
Uh, the only thing right now that I'm talking about is the skate park.
Well, I understand that, but there potentially could be other issues, like you alluded to, you know, the, the, the summer camps. And I, and I think, you know, potentially the council could be weighing in on, on that particular decision. Uh, opening up Kids Cove. I mean, there could be a variety of different things that we may be asked to, to tackle. Coming up soon. And I, I mean, like I said, I'd rather, I will, I will follow the direction of what the council wants, would like to do. I just, we're gonna, we, we're gonna be meeting on the eleventh. I think it poses a really good opportunity to, to firm up the charge from where I sit. Thank you.
Eileen, quickly?
Uh, I ju- all I wanted to say is that, um, it's a very small decision to make. It's one particular thing. Um, I, um, I, I, you know, what if it ha- the governor always meets at three o'clock on a Friday afternoon? Uh, you gonna miss a weekend for the kids in the skate park because you have to get together and make a decision about it? Uh, I'm sure there'll be other decisions that you'll be making on the, um, eleventh, having to do with s- summer camp and that kind of thing. But I, I, I don't know why this one small thing that people seem to have a, a particular interest in, um, can't just be done administratively.
And, and it maybe can be. Lon?
Yeah, small things and how many times are we gonna move the goalposts? I think the suggestion for waiting on the governor is, is well-founded and, and, um, pretty solid. I'm my own favorite governor, but that's a different story. Um, I think we've made good decisions so far here in Merrimack to keep our residents safe, to keep our residents, um, at least aware that there needs to be some, call it sacrifice, call it, uh, caring about yourselves and others. I'm not interested in opening the skate park now. I'm not sure I'm interested in a lot of what I heard the governor say this afternoon, but that's okay too. Thanks.
Thank you. Barbara, did I see your hand?
Yeah, you know, I, I just, um, you know, I, I understand the reluctance. And, and, you know, it's not misplaced, Bill. Because, um, you know, they've kind of finally caught up with the testing for the last couple of days. And we've got a hundred and one new cases in the state. So, you know, it's not like this thing is over yet. So, uh, you, you know, you may be right. It may be well worth waiting and reviewing what the data is and what the governor's doing. Thank you.
And, and, and to dov- and I appreciate what you're saying, Council Healy. But, you know, you go south of here and they just open things up, you know, south of us. So if you accept the premise that the, the virus has a three to fourteen-day, you know, dormancy period or, or latency period, however you want to phrase it, you know, what they're doing down in Massachusetts, I think is going to kind of give us some indication of, of, of how we should be handling things. At least from, from a data perspective, because two weeks from now, they're either gonna, they're either gonna be flattening things or there's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be an uptick. And then the question becomes how big of an uptick.
Absolutely. And we do have a fair number of Massachusetts plates driving around Merrimack at any point in time during the day, so.
Exactly.
Good point.
Just one thing. I just, I don't see them going to our skate park. Um, and that's all I'm talking about. So I think we're, uh, going down a slippery slope where we start second, uh, guessing, uh, what the governor's recommending based on our own, um, information. I, I don't, I don't, I know Nancy and, uh, Barbara are much more qualified than me to, uh, have opinions about that. But I think that, um, I'm feeling that there, we don't have the basis of knowledge because there isn't enough knowledge. And what I'll also say is that I really appreciate what the governor has been saying all along, which is that we can roll this back. This isn't, we're open and now it's always open. If we have a problem, we end up with, with a problem, um, with vandalism and things like that that we're seeing down at Watson Park, which by the way, is disgraceful. Um, they, then we have to, um, you know, you guys will have to think about revising it and pulling stuff back. And that's what the governor's talking about. So again, I, I'm not looking for a general policy decision that we're gonna just carte blanche, um, do everything that the governor is recommending, although I don't think it's a bad idea. But personally, but, um, but I'm just talking about the skate park. And I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Does anybody want to make a motion to give Eileen the authority to move forward with the skate park, given a positive response from the governor's task force or the governor in the next week or so before our next meeting?
I'd be happy to make that motion. Are you comfortable with that, Eileen? You, I don't he- I don't hea-
Oh, yes, absolutely, I am.
Okay. I mean, we are talking about the skate park only.
Yes, absolutely.
There is, uh, specificity in what the, uh, governor says that gives you comfort, then I think you should be able to have the right to do it.
Oh, is that a motion, Nancy?
Yeah.
To allow, give the administrative authority to her to open up the skate park based upon governor recommendations.
Second.
Okay. So a motion's on the floor and made by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. Does anybody want to speak to it? I saw some shaking heads and various different things. I, I personally have had problems with opening the skate park on the argument that people are gonna stay far apart and things of that nature, because I believe people are gonna slip on the, on the equipment and they're gonna sweat and they're gonna spread bodily fluids all over that other folks might interact with. Having said that, I have no problem with opening the park if somebody wants to tell me that they think it's safe to do so. Uh, and so I'm okay with allowing the town manager that administrative approval authority at this point between now and our next meeting on the eleventh. If there's no other comments anybody wants to make, we'll call for a vote. Starting with Lon Woods?
Present.
Is that abstaining?
To vote present. It's a legal vote.
Okay. Um, I vote yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Bill?
Boy, aye.
And Barbara?
Yes.
That passes five zero zero with one vote as present, uh, from Lon Woods. So, Eileen, that gives you the authority based on the governor's comments next, whenever. Uh, if it, if it seems like it gives us a clear go-ahead to open the skate park, to go, to go ahead and open the skate park.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, um, the rest that I, I just wanted to tell you is that we're doing a lot of planning around the, um, the some, the summer camp. Uh, there are a lot of frantic parents and Bill knows a lot of frantic, um, um, camp counselors who are concerned about, um, da- childcare for their children. Uh, the late nature of us not having any, um, any, uh, guidance from the governor at this point, which I, I don't, uh, disparage him for that certainly, because I wouldn't want to be a governor these days. Um, but anyway, um, so we've been doing planning around that. Uh, Matt has fabulous ideas and protocols. Um, one minute of the day, I am very strongly in favor of opening. And the next minute, I'm very opposed to opening at all. So, um, I thought I had made my, I just, I thought I had made a decision that I could make a recommend to you. And I s- asked my daughter, who has an eleven-year-old, um, what do you think about opening summer camp? And she goes, what are you, nuts? And I was thinking about, you know, recommending opening. So, um, again, we don't have guidance from the governor. Um, that obviously is a bigger decision. Um, there are many communities that are waiting. There are a lot of communities who have decided to clo- keep theirs closed, um, including, um, the boys and girls, um, scouts. Is that right, Bill? Yeah. And, uh, the YMCA, for instance, is open. Camp Sergeant's gonna be open. It's not open yet.
They're, yes, they're planning on.
They're planning on opening again. Everybody's waiting for the governor. So I just wanted to let you know and everyone know that a great deal of thought and, um, consideration has already been given to protocols and thoughts. Uh, Matt has done an enormous amount of, uh, work on that so that when, um, if and when, uh, that, that, um, go-ahead comes along, he'll be ready to make that presentation. he'll be ready to make that presentation to you. Uh, in the interim, I can send that, all that information to you so, cause it's a, you know, a lot to digest. Um, it, but fairly concise. So um, so anyway, I just wanted to uh tell you that that's a big question mark that a, a lot of people seem to be very anxious about. Um, and um, wanted to know what your uh initial thoughts are, or if you have any at this point.
Hey, Peter, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, Eileen, um, and you and I have discussed this and, and, and much like you, um, you know, there was a point that I was thinking, okay, why don't we, yeah, we, maybe we should do, open it up and, but you know, I, I, I'm second guessing it myself. Um, you know, granted, I know there are some folks that need places for their kids to go for a week, but um it, the overall risk is what concerns me to the community. Um, and that's what's weighing in my mind is, and you know, and, and my question was liability. Somebody gets sick, brings it home and all this far- so all that bothers me as well. And um, so there's just a lot in my mind. I, I gotta really tell you, I'm, I, I'm not, I, I'm, I'll just leave it at that. You can, you can tell in my voice.
Barbara?
Yeah, I think that I saw this afternoon that Wolfboro has closed down camps this summer. Can't quite remember, but anyways, supposedly, based on what he was saying today, the governor will have some guidance for tomorrow uh regarding camps. So that might be sooner than later for you, Eileen. Hopefully that helps. Um, but like Peter, I, I just, I kinda get the heebie-jeebies about all of those kids running around together. And Nancy, you're laughing, I can see you. Um, you know, it, the kids don't socially distance and they don't, you know, they just don't. So, yeah, it, it really makes me nervous regardless of all of the preliminary guidance that I've seen coming out of the reopening task force um that you've sent me, Eileen, so thank you for that.
Anybody else have comments?
I, I'll throw in my thoughts here and I, I'm all for opening the camp. Um, I understand everybody's concern. I understand everybody's thoughts uh about what a tremendously bad thing that could be. But on the other hand, I think the tremendous amount of energy and effort is going into being able to uh put in as many safeguards as possible with temperature checking, making sure people are healthy, um, doing as much social distancing as possible by limiting the size of the groups of the kids, knowing the counselors are gonna be well aware of what the situation is and how to manage and maintain their group uh and their willingness and whatnot to be involved. I, I just think that we owe it to parents and kids to be responsible more for themselves than us being responsible for them. Um, and if Matt and if the counselors and everybody are willing and interested in going forward with it, if the YMCA is opening their camp, um, I, I don't have a problem with our doing likewise. Um, we're limiting it, as I understand it, to about half the number of kids we normally did, which means we may lose money on the program. Um, but we're also limiting it, I believe, to Merrimack residents first. Um, and, and I don't see that we have a tremendous problem going on here. If we, if we check to make sure people are healthy, if we tell people that aren't healthy to stay home, if we a- accept that people can be responsible, we give them waivers, the lawyer or whatnot may not say that that doesn't abdicate us a hundred percent, but it certainly is gonna go a long way in the court to say that these individuals asked for this opportunity and they said they would be responsible for it. If they've chosen now to not be responsible and take us to court, then we just have to give it to the judge to understand what's the best move forward at this point. Um, so personally, I, I have no problem if the, if the governor comes out and says, you know, open it with caution and guidance, that we should do so.
Bill, you wanted to say something?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Um, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. The one thing that I would be looking for from Director Kisparius is how is he gonna handle a sheltering and place situation if it's a beautiful sunny hot day and all of a sudden you got a thunderstorm that shows up? And in the past, you know, the kids would go to the uh, to the performance art, arts facility and being closed in one particular building. Um, I would wanna see consideration given that if the weather report on a given day is gonna be one hundred percent rain, they can't not be open because having a complete cluster inside of, of a particular building, I think does potentially more, creates more risk as opposed to kids that are outside and, and they're open and they're regregating and recreating, congregating in, in, in a, in an open, you know, out in the open air as opposed to being contained inside a facility. So I would wanna see what the plan would be as it relates to handling inclement weather situations and whether or not there'd be a willingness to, to postpone the program for a day if, you know, kinda like a snow day. You know, now it's a rain day, you know, camp's not gonna be open because it's, it's gonna rain the entire day. And I know that in the past, that would be kind of, kind of far-fetched, but you know, these are different times. So I think we need to be precautionary in that particular regard. So um, that would be the one thing I would be asking the director to look at is considering uh adding uh, you know, the situ- a weather, a weather report, a situation report that would drive whether or not camp is gonna be open on a given day and how they would handle those specific one-off uh showers that may occur during the day and how they would want to shelter uh the campers in place while trying as best as possible maintaining the uh, the social distancing that um we've been practicing over the past couple of months. So that, that's what I would be looking for uh from, from the director in terms of how he would manage that at, at uh, at the camp. Thank you.
Nancy, I'm gonna go to Eileen real quick and then come back. Eileen?
All right, I just wanted to just give you um something uh kind of quick. Um, so the governor has already issued, uh, not the governor, but I believe it's the Gopher Group uh issued uh draft guidance. Um, and what it is, is uh they're, they're not uh, from a social, social distancing, distancing perspective, what they're doing, um, understanding the kids are kids, um, that they are limiting the sizes of the groups. So instead of having a group of twenty, you have a group of ten uh with one counselor and they would be, they would have a cabin where they would um interact on a day when it rained. Um, and just, just like very briefly, um, so much thought has been, and I'm, I'm not necessarily advocating for it cause I, I haven't come down with an opinion yet, but um, but uh, you know, so much thought has been put into it. So what he would, he proposes is that the um, the, all the camp, so there would be extensive, they have training, the, the counselors have training that they have to attend for various things in order to partic- in order to work for the town in that capacity. So um, they would have additional training having to do with uh the precautions that they needed to take for um surrounding the governor's, whatever the governor's orders are. So um, a specific instance of uh, of the idea of protecting people is more um having to do with um, before the couns- uh, so the counselors are trained, before the counselors um even clock in for the day, they're required to answer a series of questions every single day. Um, do you have a fever? Do you have someone in your home? Do you, you know, all those things and the temperature, that person's temperature would be taken before they even um clocked in. Uh, same with the um, with the kids. So they currently have a drop-off program where uh the parents come up with their car and the counselors are waiting there for them. Um, before the kid even gets out of the car, everyone in the car is questioned, you know, asked those same questions and everybody's temperature is taken. Uh, you know, as I said, we got the, the fancy new thermometers. Um, so uh, those are the types of precautions. They're, they're more of a, a preventative in, in nature rather than um, uh trying to keep kids six feet apart. So um, cause it, you know, as, as uh people have said here, that, uh, that's not possible. So um, and, and, you know, again, we're, we're going to have to take a look cause Paul's just talked, just said something to me right now about we might end up losing more money than we want to. So you know, I was thinking a few thousand dollars uh cause there is a surplus in the fund, but if it's more than that, uh, that might make the decision. I, I think uh what, what Matt has said in the camps that he has looked at, one of the considerations are that it's not financially feasible. And that makes it an easier decision. So anyway, those just, those are just some thoughts, some random things for you to kind of percolate around in your heads.
Yeah, I have to unmute myself. Nancy?
It was nice to see you having unmuted once. Okay, I guess I'm on your side, Tom, a little bit more. Maybe I'm a little bit more of a risk taker than other people. But again, under the understanding that the governor has guidelines and you meet those criteria, at some point, we have to start opening up people. And I think we have to feel comfortable, reasonably comfortable to do it. But there will be some people who will be uncomfortable no matter how prepared we are. And I think we need to acknowledge that even among ourselves. And there will be parents, no matter what kind of procedures or precautions, will not want their kids to go. And that's certainly their right, obviously. But I think, you know, we as counselors for the town have to be able to be very cautious, follow the criteria, but also be courageous in what we have to do sometimes. And, and that's a thin line sometimes. So I, I am leaning more to wanting to, but I do understand the concern and, and there are some checklists that have to be done before we do it. That's all.
I, I think that's well said and I would certainly agree that anybody that wants to opt out is welcome to opt out at no penalty. Peter?
You know, it's interesting cause I'm, I'm listening to this and I'm, I'm hearing all the procedures that we're gonna have to put in place if we do open. Um, the screening every day, by the time they get done screening and everything else, it'll be lunchtime. But um, you know, that aside, the bottom line is, I mean, we just debated, not debated, but we just discussed our concerns with the skateboard park, that you got kids that may bump into each other. Somebody might fall down and there might be some type of transfer of uh germs or something. And the, and the likelihood of that is way less than a camp. So I guess I'm kind of, I, 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 I'm not confident about this and I'm not in favor of it right now. I agree with Nancy, yeah, we gotta open up life, but I just see a lot of young kids and kids are kids and they share sandwiches and they, they do all this share sippy cups or whatever and, you know, uh, uh, to me, I, I, this may be the year and we're not gonna make any money on the camp and not that we make a killing. Maybe this is the year we just say, let's let this go by.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Peter. I think there's a distinct difference between the camp and the s- and the skateboard park in that the skateboard park is unmonitored and unmanaged, where the camp is completely managed. And there's counselors, there's people watching over it, there's all these procedures being put in place. If we put those procedures in place to let people into the skateboard park where we take their temperature, we ask them, are you healthy, is everybody in your family healthy? Then I have no problem with opening the skateboard park either. I don't, but I, I think there's a, a distinct difference in opening the doors and letting anybody walk in and interact without any kind of, of, or whatnot, except for a sign that says please socially distance and make sure you're healthy. I, I find a huge difference. So I respectfully disagree with you on that argument. But otherwise, I think we do need to open up. I think Nancy's point was very well made.
Excuse me, Barbara?
Yeah, and I, and I don't wanna ruin everybody's day, but you know, it's okay to take everybody's temperature as you're going in and you know, that's a good thing. But if they do end up developing a temp, you're already too late. You've already infected half the camp. So just keep that in mind as well.
That is always gonna be.
Absolutely. You can be in Walmart and it'll happen to you.
But at what point, and I don't know when it is, to be honest, but at one point is not that part, not part of the criteria, at one point.
I don't know. You know, maybe that might be a, a question for the lawyers, Eileen, because if you have so many procedures in place to try to get it, to find it, to stop it, are you, and it develops and then you have an infection? Is it, is, are you more complicit than what you would have been if you hadn't taken someone's temperature at all? I don't know.
Well, first of all, you can't sign your, your liability away. That's, that's true anywhere.
Absolutely.
Eileen?
So um, what, what the attorney said was that, just what Nancy said, you can't sign away your liability even if you sign something. But if, if you are basing your judgment on a higher level of authority such as the governor and you have followed the explicit instructions, um, and don't um, you know, don't, aren't less cautious than um, than those guidelines. If you're, you're less cautious than those guidelines indicate, then you open yourself up to more. So again, I, I'm not expecting answers tonight. There's a lot of good thoughts and there's a lot of good um things. And as I said, I, I could be swayed either way about five times a day. So um, anyway, um, I'll, I'll be giving you, I'll be sending out the materials that Matt has done, the draft guidance that the governor has put together. Um, and, and you know, for you to have that information, think, you know, and have more uh time to, to review it and, you know, make a decision when the, when the time comes. And it may not be for a couple of weeks, is what Dick Inch is saying. You're muted.
No, I know, not to belabor things. Uh, is there any other discussions that we wanna have relative to the uh emergency order to shut down things in town? Uh, or have we kind of beat this?
I don't have anything.
Anybody else? I mean, I, we, we could bring up basketball, but I think we'd be just, you know, beating a dead horse at this point. Uh, I think we need to wait for some further guidance before we move much farther forward as far as opening things.
Oh.
The, the other question is, is things like the volleyball courts and people are playing there anyway without the nets.
Not surprised.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that we care. Um, we're not the COVID nineteen police. We're not gonna go around and beat everybody over the head. Uh, we've said that a couple of times and so, you know, unless, unless we feel like there's some action we need to take. Um, the only other concern is you all saw the reports of the, the damage and the trash at Watson Park. Is there anything the council can do or should do with regard to that? Or do we just uh look to the police to do more directed patrols and try and be aware of what's going on?
I've asked Denise to write up uh, uh, sort of, um, you know, to give some more information on that and to, you know, come up with a specific plan on what to do because, I mean, hypodermic needles down by the water, uh, left um, a ring of, 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 what do they call it? Charcoal ring. People were, had, had started a fire, you know, in a, you know, makeshift fire pit down there. I mean, what is, what in the world? People are, you know, some, some residents said that uh there were um people down there swimming and there are people standing in the water smoking cigarettes around other people and crowded. And I don't, you know, I mean, that's one of the problems that everyone in this whole country and probably in the whole world is gonna have, is that Is that if people can't be respectful of other people and of properties and, and things, it, it makes you not want to open anything. It, it makes you wanna put more restrictions on because it's just, there's no common sense. And there's, um, in certain circumstances with certain people. It just, it's, it's, it's frustrating.
I would agree with that. Barbara, you had your hand up?
Yeah, you know, if you remember, we had this problem last year. Remember, Fourth of July, we, it was, it was filled. Mute yourself. We had this problem last year. Um, it's, hasn't gone away. If anything, it's gotten worse because Massachusetts is locked down. So, you know, they're going to be looking for places to escape and we're right over the border within driving distance. So I don't know what the answer is, short of closing our parks down, and I don't wanna do that for our people.
Peter?
Yeah, um, maybe, I know that we usually don't stack the lifeguards or whatever until farther into or closer to the summer. Uh, but maybe it's time we, you may, maybe it's not even a lifeguard, but maybe it's time we have somebody down there just monitoring that people are obeying the park rules. You know, uh, as far as the drinking and the proper parking areas and no fires and so forth. Um, a- and things like that. Um, maybe it's time we start putting people down, somebody down there, um, especially when we know we got a hot sunny day coming in. So it's one thought.
Are, are you suggesting like an off-duty policeman patrol the parks or?
We could have just a, a Parks and Rec employee. I know we have the radio. Um, and they could be there to see, you know, if you've got people doing, uh, violating the park rules themselves. They could say, all right, you know, maybe address and say, hey, can you stop that? Um, and if the people don't wanna see some of this, maybe they pick up the radio and say, hey, can I have an officer come down here? You know, uh, but at least have some eyeballs on it and let people know that there is somebody monitoring that area.
Well, legally, they're not even supposed to be able to swim there. Isn't that right, Eileen?
Well, um, I, I, I asked that question, I have never gotten a document that actually shows me that there's not supposed to be swimming there. It was my understanding from a liability perspective that we're not supposed to say anything about swimming unless you say no swimming at all.
There used to be no swimming sign.
And, and that's because of, uh, that particular park has such steep slopes, such a, you know, um, so, but I find out today that the sign actually says, swim at your own risk. Uh, I don't know who, what.
Well, you know, it, it's interesting because, um, um, you know, I, 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 I guess I'm, I, I think that we need to have, like I said, somebody down there. And can we use the, that grant, uh, to, uh, for the purpose of hi- hiring or offering overtime? To have, to pay somebody down there? Doesn't necessarily have to be a police officer, just somebody who knows the rules and can either call or radio in when we have an issue.
Yeah, that was la- it was last night. They were lighting fires there last night and we found the evidence of it this morning. So, uh, right across the street from the fire department. So, um, and, you know, like I said, shoot, there's hypodermic needles down there along with diapers and, you know, dirty diapers and that kind of thing. And it, it, it wasn't there the, the, during the day, to my knowledge. Uh, so, is somebody gonna have to sit down there for twenty-four hours? I mean, something has to be done and, um, we need to clearly monitor that more closely. I can't imagine that it's our residents that are doing that kind of thing. It's, Paul was saying that he, if you, if you search, uh, something about small swimming holes on Google, Watson Park comes up.
Wildcat Falls and Watson Park.
Wildcat Falls and Watson Park in my area.
Again, if we were to put someone down there to monitor it, my concern is that action condones it.
Right.
If we're down, oh, now you're not supposed to be doing this. You can be here, but you can't be doing it. We are condoning them being there. So that increases the liability in my, I mean, I understand your point, Pete. And I understand the motivation, but our putting someone there to try to prevent, unless they wanna say you don't belong here, get out of here. If you're saying, don't get dirty, but you can be here. Do you know what I'm saying? It's contradicting.
The whole issue really is the concern about swimming with that horrendous slope there. There shouldn't be swimming allowed there. Uh, we have not done anything about it. Um, but you could take, take action at, at some point. Um, and it's really a shame because I think some residents find it a, you know, kind of a sweet little place to go. If, if you, you know.
That's exactly right, Eileen, that, I mean, we haven't done anything about it in the past because quite a few people have come out and said, but we've always been able to wait and swim there. Why would you say we can't do that now? And, you know, just the fact that there, you think there's a horrendous slope there, people have been dealing with that for years and years. I'm sure Finley, if he was here, would have just plenty to say about that whole issue. And that's part of why we, we presumably put up the, at your own risk sign saying that the town's not gonna take responsibility. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna say it's a good idea either. But we did help to clean out or, or assisted or worked with people to clean out some of the junk that's in there. So that folks didn't impale themselves on an iron rod and stuff like that.
That happened.
Um, I, I'm not out of control here, so I think, Bill, you are asking or wanting to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the question is, don't we have a dawn to dust policy with our parks?
Yes, we do.
Oh, and is that sign not posted?
It is.
Then, then it's, to me, from where I sit, and I say this respectfully, it's an enforcement issue. If, if people are not supposed to be there after dusk, then, uh, our, our police department needs to be going down there and politely telling people to, to, to move along. You know, I, I, I do know that there are people that will park there because they're working at Buckley's or they may be working at Lobster Boat. You know, that's, you know, again, that's a different issue, but at the end of the day, the policy is dawn to dusk. And we should be enforcing that. That's, that's number one. Number two, I thought the council, a couple of years ago, we had it, we had an issue regarding some of the erosion problems going on down there. And I thought we were looking to, I thought we were looking to put a fence along the perimeter of the river to, to mitigate some of those erosion problems down there. And I could be wrong, but I could have sworn that we, we discussed that a couple of years ago.
We did a stairwell down there or something like that to try?
Nope.
I didn't.
No, it just, it opens us up way, I mean, you're gonna have to provide handicapped accessibility and, you know, I mean, you start going down that whole road. So, um, Paul has something to say. I just, I, I appreciate being able to talk to you about some of these things because there are so many aspects that, um, you know, all of us are kind of facing trying to come up with solutions that don't have a, a, you know, a definitive, um, decisive manner in which to handle things because people are people. Um, so, um, so anyway, um, the other thing, Matt just texted Paul and said, what about the Fourth of July? And, um, again, I don't ask you to make a decision right now, although.
You've got a month.
You've got a month. Um, the thought was, um, and I've spoken to most of you individually. The thought was that we would, um, not have the parade. Um, and that we would spend the extra money on, um, more, um, bigger fireworks.
Higher in the sky.
Higher in the sky. So anyway, that's just another, you know, just another thing that we're thinking about.
Yeah, and, and again, my thought on that goes along with what I've been saying all along. People that are afraid to get COVID nineteen from being in a crowd should not go. And people should socially distance. And if they feel like they're gonna end up too close to other people, put a mask on. Um, to try and avoid either you inhaling or you distributing droplets or whatever the CDC wants to talk about that masks were supposed to help us with. You know, bring along your hand sanitizer if you're gonna be touching and grabbing things. I think we need to allow people to be people. And I think, personally, I think some of the problem with last night is that people are getting stir crazy. And I mean literally crazy. And so they're going out and doing stupid things. And, um, the more we try and, and lock down and cut down and, and keep people from being able to do anything, the more we're gonna run into problems with people literally going stir crazy. Uh, and that doesn't excuse bad behavior. It just helps us to understand that there are problems that we're developing, unintended consequences of some of the things that we're doing. Whether, with the greatest intentions, uh, we could be causing other problems. We need to keep in mind the unintended consequences. I didn't see any other hands go off. Does somebody else have anything they wanna add? So Eileen, my, my suggestion is we still plan on going forward with the Fourth of July. And, and we'll, we'll take it up next, in two weeks on the eleventh. As to how things are going and what kind of guidance we've been getting from the, uh, governor.
Uh, I don't think we can, uh, the, the parade requires a lot of advancement.
Parade, I think we all agreed was gonna be.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry. I, the only thing I think we went, plan to go forward with was the Fourth of July fireworks. Um, I don't even know what the Rotary's current position is as far as things like pancake breakfast, but I'm guessing it's a no-go at this stage.
No, they're, they're thinking about having something in the fall.
Yeah, I understood that. Uh, an old country home days or something like that in the fall. But I didn't know they were still thinking of the Sparkler five K run or the?
No, that's been canceled.
Okay, five K, alright, fine. So the only thing they think is still on the books as a possibility would be the Fourth of July fireworks. Uh, everything else would probably be canceled just due to the concerns with, uh, close proximity of crowds. Any other comments?
I have a comment. I, I guess what I would say is, um, now that I've been all over the place, I, I, I just wanna say that, um, I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, not saying this is gonna be forever, but saying, you know, maybe just this summer. You know, and when, when se- everything is still so up in the air and there's so many questions and we don't understand the virus at all. We don't know how many people are infected or how any of those things would be, be happening. Um, you know, I, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with that either. So, that's all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for confusing the heck out of me, right?
Absolutely. I mean, we said, we said it's just this spring, now we're saying it's just this summer. And when we get around to saying it's just this fall, I think we're gonna have a riot. See what happens.
And that's what makes it so difficult, is that everyone?
Kind of, of treatment will come positive in the near future. You know, I don't imagine a vaccine, but some kind of positive treatment that'll reduce the, the concerns about fatalities. Hopefully, uh, that's all I can hope out, you know, hold out for hope. They, they do make forward progress in that respect. Till then, a lot of people are afraid of dying alone and, and sick and hacking in a bed somewhere. There hasn't been that much of it as a percentage.
But again, you got, you don't know, you don't have enough tests. So, um, we can debate this all night. So, uh, we don't know what the fatality, what the mortality is, rate is because, you know, less than one percent, two percent of the population has been tested. So.
And the more that's given.
Deaths and you end up with a, you know, really scary mortality number.
But the more you test, the lower the fatality rate.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Which means it's gonna get lower.
Yes.
Right, okay. Cause right now the CDC says it's about zero point three percent, no, point zero three percent.
Right, right. And that's overinflated as well.
But what's the, what's the mortality rate for a, a typical flu in the flu season?
Point oh one.
Okay, so we're not.
I just made that up.
Our office, I mean, when people are saying it's ten.
I made it up. We saved it.
I was, I was happy to believe you.
Yeah, I think it is right though.
Dr. Cabanel? Okay, so I think we beat this dead horse multiple times.
I know.
Is, is there a- any other discussion that we wanna have relative to our emergency order and opening town hall and opening up town facilities?
I don't have anything.
None, we'll, we'll move forward.
The horse is dead.
Absolutely.
Dead horse.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, that brings us to minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would move to Thursday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty, Town Council meeting minutes, as presented.
Second.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Peter. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions or modifications?
Barbara, I didn't see anything, so.
I didn't either.
Okay.
Looked clean to me.
Okay, they're not even asking the rest of us. What's with that?
I know.
I, I asked everybody, does anybody see?
I defer to Nancy.
It's long.
You want my forty-seven, uh, deletions, additions and changes?
Yes, I do.
I have none.
I still want those, thank you. Peter, you're the only one that hasn't said anything yet.
Oh, I'm good. I, I think I've said enough.
We'll move to a vote on accepting the minutes of May fourteenth. All those in, well, how would you vote?
Would ye.
And Tom Koenig, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Peter Albert?
Yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd, aye.
And Barbara Healy?
Yes.
Okay. So we voted to accept the minutes of May fourteenth. Comments from the press? Comments from the public? We don't have anybody still with us.
We're all giving up.
Far as I can see. Comments from the council? Have we said enough or do, Bill?
I'll make this very quick, Mr. Chairman. I wanna take the opportunity to thank the, uh, Merrimack School Board for moving ahead with graduation on June thirteenth. And I especially wanna thank, uh, Harley Hall, a member of the class of twenty twenty, who floated the idea to the school board and the school board was enthralled with it. And, uh, it's a go. Um, it's probably gonna be an atypical graduation in Merrimack. But nonetheless, uh, the seniors of our community are gonna get the opportunity to walk and get recognized for their four years of hard work. So I just wanna thank Harley Hall for, for the idea and to the school board for their, their leadership and, and, and recognizing a good idea and making this happen. So thank you very much and, uh, looking forward to a great graduation day on June thirteenth. I know there's a certain eighteen-year-old daughter in this house that's looking forward to it as well. So, uh, it's gonna be a great day. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome. Thank you, Bill. Anybody else have comments? Nancy? No? So let me just, as it, close us out with a public service announcement and, and remind everybody that there's, we're still in the middle of Census twenty twenty. Uh, please, if you have not already, please go and fill out your census form. Uh, dig through your mail, there's, uh, documents there. Uh, you will be contacted sometime within the next probably nine months at this point. Um, but I, I really don't know how long it's gonna take. Um, but I, I really don't know how long it's gonna take. Um, but they have pushed off, they're, they were door-to-door for later in the summer, I believe. Um, absentee ballots. If you've stuck with us this long, I, you must understand that. We're trying to encourage people to get an absentee ballot, uh, to reduce the number of people that have to come to the polls. We will be there and we'll be happy to have you come out and vote. But if you, uh, are concerned about your own health and safety, um, the answer is to file for and get an absentee ballot and turn it in. We want to hear your opinion. Um, there are quite a few articles on the ballot, both on the town and the school district side. Um, so it's, it's very important. We don't want you to simply stay away because you're worried about, uh, any health concerns. Um, please get an absentee ballot. And the less people that come out to actually vote, the, uh. Safer and happier everybody will be as far as social distancing is concerned. And you won't have to complain about standing in lines or being held six feet apart or any of those things that we're constantly discussing. Or having to wear a mask to go vote, uh, if you do an absentee ballot. So, by all means, consider it. Go to the town website. Uh, if you have problems and you can't figure out any better way, text me and I'll guide you through it. You can find my address and number, again, on the website. Uh, or contact any of the counselors and we'll be happy to help you out. Aside from that, please understand that we are definitely trying our very best to look out for everybody's health and welfare. And trying specifically to keep our town staff healthy. And so our thanks go out to the police department, the fire department, uh, Parks and Rec, all the people in town hall. All the people at DPW, both, uh, in, in the highway, in all cases, the highway, the solid waste and wastewater. Uh, and, and all of staff. We thank them for their efforts and their energy to keep things going. And we wish all of you a happy and healthy life moving forward. If there's no other comments?
Well said. You do what you're on. And well said, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we have a motion adjourned from Bill?
Second.
Seconded by Barbara. Uh, Lon, how do you vote?
Would ye.
Um, yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, aye.
And Barbara?
Yes.
That's it. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Six zero zero.
Thank you.
If you want to vote in the June twenty-third town election but don't feel comfortable going to a polling place due to COVID nineteen. Voting via absentee ballot is an option to all voters. Request your absentee ballot. Visit the town's website, merrimacknh.gov, and you'll see a direct link to the request form. Print and fill out your request form and mail it to the town clerk's office at six Babusick Lake Road. Email your request to townclerk@merrimacknh.gov, fax it to six oh three, four two three, eight five three nine. Or leave your request form in the drop box, also located at six Babusick Lake Road, and the ballot will be mailed to your address. Due to town hall being closed to the public until further notice, there is no ability to request an absentee ballot in person. Once you receive your absentee ballot, the town clerk's office strongly recommends returning your ballot through the mail as soon as possible. When returning a ballot by mail, it must be received by five PM on voting day, June twenty-third, twenty twenty. Mail your absentee ballot in a timely manner to ensure they're received by five PM on June twenty-third, twenty twenty. Please note, ballots cannot be left in the drop box at town hall. This election may be different from what you're used to, but you can be confident that Merrimack wants to keep voting as accessible as possible. So that everyone can continue to participate in the democratic process. For the most up-to-date information on absentee ballots, the town election, or for further clarification. Please visit merrimacknh.gov. Click on Town Clerk under the Department's tab. And then Elections and Voting. Thank you for watching.